Town Administrator will give us a presentation on the fiscal year 21 departmental personnel change requests.
Do you think?
At 7:30, we were to have a continued hearing for the entertainment license for Friends Country Store, and that application has been withdrawn by the applicant, so we will just be closing that hearing and not having any discussion. At 7:45, we will have a joint Selectmen-Fincom School Committee Budget Coordination Meeting. 8:45, we're going to have the non-exercise of the first refusal rights on 767 Bedford Road. 9:00 PM, a discussion and approval of bow hunting charter regulations. At 9:30, the Selectment Policy Guideline and Town Organizational Review. At 10:00 Cemetery Deeds, 10:05 Town Administrator's Report. At 10:15 Liaison Reports. At 10:25 Minutes, and at 10:30 Adjournment. I'm going to make use of my gavel if I have to in order to keep us in line and on schedule, just so you know. Got bumped out.
Oh, okay. All right.
Are you there?
Is there anybody here for community input this evening?
Hello?
Hi, Nathan, are you there?
Nancy?
Yeah.
Can you hear me okay? Do I need to turn anything up?
Can you speak into this?
Yes.
It's all right here. TV, really.
Okay. Is this working?
It doesn't amplify.
Yeah, okay, she nodded, all right. My name is Nancy Pierce, I live at 1152 Westford Street, an abutter to the communications tower proposed at 1110 Westford Street. We have not been able to speak about our concerns at any public meeting, so I'm going to try to rush through them as fast as possible. I've also given you a letter with more details, and attached to it, a memo I wrote for the Fincom about my analysis of the comparison of the costs of renting the cell tower, space on the cell tower at Sorley Farm, and building, and the town building its own cell tower. I just want to say first that this is going to sound a lot like NIMBY-ism, but we already have a cell tower in our neighborhood, so it's not really NIMBY. There are other concerns besides our financial losses and the possible doubling or tripling of the health risks that I think the entire town should be worried about. We have several kind of substantive questions to be raised. One is whether the amount that the town might save by building a tower is worth the cost to us as abutters financially and psychologically. The second is the concern about a blight on Sorley Farm. This will place a kind of an ugly industrial-style eyesore right next to, in fact, right in the middle of one of the vistas that is, that you see along the half-mile that goes from Curved Street to my driveway. And the third is that I think that there's an inconsistency in placing this tower in a residential area with some of the town's implied and explicit policies about placing these towers in the past. I don't have time to go into all of it, so I'll just try to rush through it. The first is, I've attached a memo to this letter that has tables of the cost of building the tower versus the cost of renting it over a 10-, 20-, and 30-year bonding period. The bottom line is that the town will not save any money by building rather than renting the tower until at least 20 years, and then at 20 years, it's a fairly small amount, $22,000. The town will not, according to my analysis, the town won't save much money until closer to 30 years, when it would save $243,000. In the memo to the Fincom, I've also gone into some detail about projecting the losses to us as homeowners of 10% to 15% of our property value, which really dwarfs the amount that the town would save over the course of 30 years. The present value of $243,000 savings is actually, in 2019 dollars, only $100,000. And it looks to me as if that tower is built, there would be losses of at least a half a million dollars to the closest homeowners, and that's a pretty low estimate. Then, the other concern that I think everybody in town should have is about Sorley Farm. It's one of our prime assets. It's a bucolic landscape. The town has spent at least $850,000 in CPA money to try to preserve it unspoiled. It runs, as I said, a half a mile from Curved Street all the way to my driveway. There are vistas on both sides of the road, there's deep woods, there's lovely fields, and it's completely unspoiled, and this is going to put a tower that is going to be at least 50 feet over the, above the tree line, right next to it. It's right on property that is, that sort of juts right into this Sorley Farm property. Right next to the road is going to be a half an acre that's going to have had a lot of trees removed, and I don't know what the building's going to look like, but it's, there's going to be ugly chain-link fencing, and it's not like it's going to be hidden deep in the woods, it's right next to the road. This is a public asset. As I said, the town has spent a lot of money, the Carlisle Conservation Foundation and town volunteers have worked for how many years trying to preserve it unspoiled, and I think that we should ask whether this is a sensible thing to do, given all this effort and money. Finally, there are some, I think, implicit and explicit promises that have been made in the past about where these towers should be placed. In 2017, there's a long history that I won't go into because I don't have time, there were protests by neighbors, the locations were changed before town meeting, and at the time, several officials made statements saying that obviously these towers will not fly, won't work, can't work in neighborhoods. And at, on the floor of town meeting, an assurance was made to voters that once this article was passed, if it was approved, those four locations, Vanadavis, Proctor Road, Police Station, and Fire Station, would not be able to be changed. Now, what happened to that promise? Was it genuine, or was it just kind of to disarm the opposition so that they could get those, that plan passed? I'm not saying it was insincere, but if that was a genuine and sincere promise, placing it in our neighborhood so close to our houses is pretty inconsistent. The other concern that I think everybody in town should have is that we have a cell tower bylaw that's been in place for 20 years. As far as I can tell, it's the closest the town has to an explicit policy about what's safe and fair about how to place towers like this. That states that no home can be within 900 feet of a tower. Five of our homes are within 300 feet of this proposed tower, and there are seven more that are at 900 or possibly 1,000 feet, I couldn't tell because I'm not that sophisticated with Google Maps. Essentially, the town is violating its own bylaw. Now, I know that the town is exempt, and we acknowledge that the town is exempt, but still, it seems like ethically the town should try to follow the same rules that it would hold Verizon or AT&amp;T to. Those are essentially all the arguments I have to make. I would be happy to answer questions, there's more detail in the letter, as I said.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything to say?
Just one to a customer.
No?
Thank you.
I have a short one-page letter I'd like to read to the Board of Selectmen. It has attachments, but I'm not reading the attachments, just the short, one-page letter.
Appreciate that, we have a very heavy agenda tonight.
Thanks. It'll be one-page letter, you'll see the letter right on top.
Hi, my name is Jeannie Janetzko, I'm at 898 Maple Street in Carlisle, and I have a letter with three attachments that I've given to the Board of Selectmen, and the letter says, "Dear Select Board, Two Different Carlisle Committees Should Not Be At Odds On An Issue." At the July 31, 2019 Community Input Session, the Deer Committee made a presentation which included a slide on why did Carlisle implement the deer hunt. One of the reasons given was Lyme disease risks, even though this is in opposition to the Deer Committee's own February 2, 2018 presentation, that Lyme disease was, quote, 'not a primary reason to manage the deer herd,' unquote. The Deer Committee's primary purpose was, is to implement the deer hunts, so it is understandable that they might be confused on the deer control Lyme disease connection. Therefore, it is necessary to go to another Carlisle committee that is eminently qualified to make this judgment, the Carlisle Board of Health's Lyme Disease Subcommittee. On April 1, 2019, the Lyme Disease Subcommittee voted to approve a final statement on deer hunting in Carlisle. Quote, Lyme Disease Subcommittee Statement 4.1.19, with respect to how it pertains to Lyme disease. Essentially, the document says that outside of complete elimination of deer from isolated settings like islands, there is little evidence that deer control works to reduce Lyme disease risk. Lyme disease should not be a major factor for the deer hunt, major rationale for the deer hunt. In addition, I have attached a technical paper, 2015, published in the journal Zoonosis and Public Health, with lead author K.J. Klugler of the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC. Klugler's conclusion is, quote, "Currently, there is insufficient evidence to recommend deer population reduction as a Lyme disease prevention measure, except in specific ecological circumstances," unquote. As the LDC statement noted, that means complete deer elimination in isolated settings like islands. I submitted the reference documents to the Deer Committee at their August 21 meeting for inclusion in their minutes, and asked them to add these documents to their folder titled Deer Committee Reference Documents. The corrected information also suggests that the BOH is no longer a player in the bow hunting program, and that they should be relieved from reviewing such documents as the deer hunting regulations as specified in the Deer Committee Controlled Charter. Sincerely, Jeannie Janetzko, 898 Maple Street, and there are three attachments. Thank you.
Okay. We have the library trust.
I too have comments, but I'm wondering, should I present them now on the Deer Committee or what?
Now, is when I'm taking public comment. I'm not taking public comment during our discussions.
My name is Mike Hanauer, I live at 200 Longridge Road. I abut the Davis Corridor. Last fall, I twice tried to lead hiking trips into Davis Corridor, and people would not go because of the situation. I'm looking for more fairness to the neighborhoods. We're inundated with cars from hunters, and it looks like this year, the Deer Control Committee is looking for more cars and more hunters in the Davis Corridor than even previously. And I'm looking for more consideration for myself, for people putting up with the parked cars, and the hunting situation, and people who like to hike the trails. I realize it's basically safe, but there's a lot of fear out there over possible, you know, injury and privacy and the locations. I went to the meeting last week of the Deer Committee, and frankly, what I heard over a number of issues, including a proposal I made, was the committee is concerned only with the desires of the deer hunters, and not for the residents of the town. And I think that we need some balance here. I see that we've defeated reducing the number of days, reducing the hours, perhaps even increasing the hunting season, with no consideration for the people in the town, and especially the people in the neighborhood. I made a proposal, which I believe you have seen, that we rotate the areas where hunting is to take place, and that was rejected. So again, it just seems like the Deer Control Committee is an advocacy committee for the hunters, and I just don't think that's right. I don't understand how this can happen, and I'd like to see this corrected. I'm also, in the proposal for this year's deer hunting, all it says as a mission or goal for the Deer Control Committee is to reduce the number of deer. No finite number. That says to me, this will never end. You know, that's a catch-22. It seems to me if this is really about the town and about fairness, then we have quantitative goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, could you state your name and address, please?
Yes. George Maholick, 94 Canterbury Court, Carlisle. I just want to talk about deer, too, very quickly, I'll make it short.
Thank you.
I'm one of the hunters, I'm also a landowner and a abutter to the Davis Corridor. As far as that gentleman's concern about parking, I had offered my driveway to the hunter that had parked there last year to keep the car away from Mike's property. So, we're going to try to keep cars away from that area and keep it confined to parking areas, and I just wanted to let you folks know, and also Mike, know that. Also with, as far as ticks go, Lyme disease is helped spread by deer, and we know that, but it's not the only reason we're hunting. We're hunting also for, to thin the population, to help the environment, and also help the deer, too, because the deer in an overpopulated state run into cars, they starve to death in the winter, and it's brutal and violent for them to go that way with a coyote, you know, taking them down in the middle of winter. So, you know, there's a lot of different reasons why we're doing it, we're not just doing it for Lyme disease, so that shouldn't even be a consideration, even though there is proof that it does curb it. So I just wanted to make those statements very quickly, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to give some public input?
Kristina, just a little less, I'm not killing. I just want to say, you bring up the fact that deer may starve, that it's brutal. It's also brutal when a deer is shot with an arrow, and it goes on wounded for hours, sometimes days. Two years ago, the entire winter, there was a deer with an arrow in it. I saw it throughout the winter, limping through my backyard, leaving a blood of trail. So, that is also brutal. And just on a human level, I want to take it away from the abstract of, oh, we need to reduce the deer population. Please just stop and think what the town is actually advocating, what you guys are actually advocating. You're advocating the suffering of a sentient animal. There are more humane ways to control the deer population, there are other ways that can also not create the schism amongst Carlisle citizens, that, ways that does not deny, do not deny, access to a large population, to, at this point, five parcels of land. So please, just, you know, think about it on a human level, what you are actually advocating, because you would not treat a dog that way. In fact, if somebody shot a dog with an arrow and let it bleed out over hours or days, they'd be arrested. So where is the difference between advocating that treatment to another sentient creature because it's not a pet, because it's a pest and it eats our roadies? There are other options, and we're talking about just a small percentage of the kills on Carlisle land in general. We're just talking about townland. It was only 10 deer the last year, only 10 deer. The majority of the deer taken was on private land. So, is this really what Carlisle is advocating? Is this what Carlisle stands for? Is this why we've paid taxes to purchase and preserve the lands that we've preserved? It's for everybody, it's for all the citizens of Carlisle, it's for all the animals in Carlisle. I think that's why, you know, I've contributed, and so please, again, just think what you're really advocating by supporting and promoting this hunt on townland. Thank you.
All right. Will you be adding something new, sir?
I hope so.
Okay, and could you please keep it to about two minutes, because we are starting to fall behind, we have a huge agenda tonight that we really need to get to.
I understand. In addition to looking at this on a human level, I would ask that you look at it on a scientific level. Perhaps I haven't been paying attention, but I haven't heard a clear explication of why we are doing this. What benefit do we believe we would obtain by having this hunt? Because there's certainly a cost. The cost is the loss of use of conservation land that all of us are paying dearly for. And I certainly would not risk going out on those conservation lands where there were people in tree stands with lethal weapons, even though the assertion is it's safe. Consider that perhaps it's safe because people won't go there during the hunting season, and therefore they don't get shot, and therefore the statistics look good, but there, it's maybe a little bit more complicated than that. The second thing I would ask is to consider what evidence we have that the problem that you perceive actually exists. We have some people in this town who are really experts on biodiversity, who are far from convinced that we have the evidence that says that the damage to the understory is what is talked about in, for example, was talked about at town meeting, where I made the presentation on this. We need a careful scientific study of what's actually going on with the understory, we need a baseline, and then we need subsequent studies to see what the trends are. That is actually going on right now, but I don't believe that the decision is being made based on sound data. The last thing I will say is that if you decide to go ahead with this, and you believe that you're solving an actual problem that's worth the cost, we need ways of actually measuring whether your purported solution is actually effective. I'll stop.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is the appointments and resignations. We have a joint appointment with the, for our new library trustee. Do we have our library trustees here, and are you?
One.
I see one. Do we have to wait?
Do we have to have all of them?
No, we need a quorum.
I've got, I guess we'll have to wait.
Okay. I'm sorry. Municipal Facilities Committee, we have one nomination for a new member. Do I have a?
He's out of town, he gave him a standing.
Yeah, I know he's out.
Scott Simpson.
Scott Simpson, so I need a.
A motion?
Motion?
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to appoint Scott M. Simpson, 117 Judy Farm Road, to serve on the Carlisle Municipal Facilities Committee with a term expiring June 30, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll just say that Scott is an architect, he's been on a bunch of building committees, and I think he's going to be a great addition to the Municipal Facilities Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
We need a roll call vote.
We need a roll call vote, that's true, you are, yeah. So, Luke.
I'm for.
Louis, aye.
Reed, aye.
Arnold, aye.
Is Nathan still there?
No. Nathan?
Hello?
Okay, well, that was enough. That was moved, seconded, and voted. We also have a nomination for the.
Can you hear us?
For the Cultural Council.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to appoint Mark Levitan of 105 Wolf Rock Road to serve on the Cultural Council, to a term expiring June 30, 2022.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
We need a roll call for that. Luke?
I'm for.
Louis, aye.
Reed, aye.
Arnold, aye.
Nathan?
Okay, that was moved, seconded, and voted. Oops, I lost my pencil again. Sorry. Okay. Next item is, I'm going to go out of order, I'm going to take the Town Administrator's report on the, wait, is Jan?
Jan's here.
There you are, sorry. On the master plan contract.
Jan, you, maybe you could come to the.
Well, yeah, okay. Why don't you make the presentation, because I don't, you know, if there are questions, Jan is here.
In brief, the master plan project was.
Can you hear us?
Was being advertised, and the selection committee interviewed two finalists for the position, for the job, Civic Moxy and PHB. Selection Committee is recommending Civic Moxy of Brookline, Mass. to be awarded the contract for the master plan project, and in the amount of $135,000. Since the contract exceeds $50,000, the Board of Selectmen must award it, and Jan is here to fill in details I made amiss, and to tell you what a good firm Civic Moxy is, I think. We appreciate the board's action on that this evening.
Okay. Also, does anybody have any questions about the process, or the?
Well, I'll just say, yeah, as the Board of Selectmen member on the search committee, it was a very thorough process. We had three proposals that we considered and narrowed it down to two, and then we interviewed in person both teams, and checked references, and did a very thorough review, I believe, before deciding to recommend Civic Moxy. And just while I have the mic, I want to give a special thanks to Jan Corniel, who has led this process, and put many hours of time into getting us as far along as we are. She's done an excellent job for us.
All right, and while you have the microphone, you want to make a motion?
Sure. Let's see, do we have it right here? Yeah. I move that the board, I move that the board.
Award.
Approve, award, okay, I move.
Shh, goodness, I'll tell you.
I move that. I, I move that the board award the contract for the master plan project to Civic Moxy of Brookline, Massachusetts, in the amount of $135,000, and further authorize the chair or the town administrator to execute the appropriate contract documents.
Second.
Are there any questions, discussion?
Is there a timeframe on that?
Yes.
On the master plan itself?
No, on the contract.
On the contract. There is not a timeframe, but we plan to do it ASAP.
Okay, so there's no, it's not a fixed-time contract?
The contract will be, will go through, I think we said it would go through September 2020.
As a schedule.
Like a 12-month.
Yeah.
12-month contract.
12 months.
All right, we have a motion, a second, we've had our discussion, any other questions? Nathan or Luke, did you have any questions for Jan?
No.
Great, here, no, okay, great, so let's start the voting with Luke.
Louis, aye.
Reed, aye.
Arnold, aye.
And then Nathan, it gets to you.
Nathan?
Well, we're going to take that as an aye. And that carries. Thank you, Jen. Town Administrator, presentation of the fiscal 21 department personnel changes. I was hoping the Fincom would be here for this presentation, could we have somebody get them? Jen?
Tom, I go?
Oh, David, thank you, thank you, David.
Right, because this is the beginning of the joint part?
Yes, and I want them to hear this, at the very least, so that we don't have to do it twice. And I'll just start by saying that on our last meeting, we already approved one submission to the Personnel Board, being the part-time grant writer slash procurement specialist.
They're not coming down for it.
They're not coming down for it.
They're not coming down for it. Okay.
That's nice.
I could send you with my gavel next time. You can just, you know, like, okay.
Shall we just clarify that this, we're not approving these specific requests, we're approving them to be put before the Personnel Board for consideration?
Or not.
Or not.
Or not.
Right, okay.
Right. Okay.
All right.
I'll summarize them for you. All of these requests were received by the August 1 deadline, and some of them may look familiar. Some of them are requests that have been made previously. There were some that kind of ran out of time at the end of the budget process last year, and that's why we're trying to do the personnel part of it up front before the budget development process starts in earnest. So the ones that have been submitted previously, there's a request to combine the two part-time assistant positions of the Board of Health into one 30-hour-per-week assistant to the Board. There's a request for six additional hours in the Town Clerk's office that was submitted last year. It's been resubmitted again by the Town Clerk. And also, the Conservation Commission has made a request for additional hours for their administrative assistant, and that request has been made last year and in previous years. Some of the new requests, you have a request, or two requests for regrading of positions, one from the Police Chief for the Police Department Administrative Assistant, and one from the Board of Assessors for their administrative assistant. They'd like the Personnel Board to look at the job description in both of those cases and determine whether the duties and responsibilities are the same as when the study was done some five years ago, whether the duties and responsibilities have increased, changed in some respects, and whether the position is properly graded. There's also a request from the Board of Health for a part-time public health nurse. This is a position that's been grant-funded for a couple of years, and they're looking to put forth a part-time public health nurse position. So that's a request for a new position. Likewise, the Council on Aging is requesting a part-time 19-and-a-half-hour outreach worker. And you've received a backup from all of these departments for all of these requests, and some of them, I think, make a compelling case for their positions, but as Barney said, at this point, you're simply making the call whether these advance to the Personnel Board level for their action or not. There are a couple of positions, well, I'll back them, say, I'd recommend that nearly all of these are appropriate to advance to the Personnel Board at this point. There are two positions or two requests that I think lack the necessary information to go forward. You may have noticed that the Planning Board requested additional hours for both the Administrator and the assistant to the planner. I think there needs to be some additional justification made for that request. I think the documentation was a little thin, to be honest. I met with both the Planning Administrator and the Vice Chair of the Planning Board. They agreed that more detail is needed, and they'll provide that in the coming weeks. They just, they're not able to provide it at this time. And I think likewise with the Board of Health, the public health nurse, maybe very worthy request, I just think that there's some detail lacking there, and I think, you know, once, if and when that's provided, I think it'd be appropriate, but to move on to the Personnel Board. So the eight requests before you, I'd recommend that six of them be advanced to the Personnel Board, and that we do not advance the request from the Planning Board, and the second request for the public health nurse from the Board of Health at this time, that they be given an opportunity to supply additional information. And you'll actually have your September 10 meeting to make a final call on that, because the Personnel Board has from the 10th to the 15th of October to take action on these requests, and they're scheduled two meetings in September. So they're waiting to kind of get their hands on these requests. But I would say, at this point in time, at this meeting, I would recommend, you know, all but for the Planning Board request and the public health nurse request to be advanced to the Personnel Board. It's only for review. That doesn't imply support or not support or anything.
Let me ask a question here. So where in the process does the cost of these various proposals get factored in? Does that wait until it goes to the FinCom? Or how does, when does that get?
Well, that would be part of the budget, yeah, the initial budget process. The complaint has been that these requests will kind of come in at the tail end of the budget process.
Right.
When it's almost set in stone, it's at the very 11th hour. So by front-loading the request, they'd be able to better see where the costs are and where they would fit.
And so does the Personnel Board consider the cost, or they're just looking at it from a personnel perspective about whether it's appropriate or not to be recommended?
The attributes necessary, the duties, responsibilities, the various criteria necessary to rate the position, they're aware of the grading scale, but they don't, you know, they do not make financial decisions, and when they make votes, they say, you know, subject to approval of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, subject to appropriation. So they're well aware that they're not the ones.
Yeah.
Making the spending decisions.
I mean, the reason I raise it is just, at some point, I mean, the one that really leaps out at me, although you're suggesting you wait on the first one, but is the, the Board of Health and the COA are both requesting, one is described as a public health nurse and the other is described as an outreach worker, but in looking at their backup data, they're using the same data, you know, for their explanation, and I know there are some differences, but I just wondered where in the process, or maybe it's already been looked at, but whether there might be some collaboration between the two rather than establishing new positions that may have some overlap. So I don't know where that happens. David is here. I don't know if it's.
Can I speak to that?
I don't know if it's appropriate to do that now, or whether it waits till there's a Finance Committee, or I don't know who.
Let me just say, there's absolutely no overlap between the public health nurse and the outreach slash outreach worker. Because I'm aware of how both work, and they're not remotely close to one another. I can expand upon that, but.
Yeah, well, I mean, the data that it's based on is simply the increase in the elderly population.
And the activities.
And that's common to both, but it doesn't necessarily tell what each one's going to do.
One is an actual need, the other is a theoretical need.
All right, well, it sounds like that needs to be saved for another time anyway.
Yes, I would like a motion.
I would move that we send the following requests for personnel changes to the Personnel Board. The request to grade Police Department Administrative Assistant, request for a 30-hour-a-week Board of Health Administrative Assistant, request for new part-time COA outreach worker, request to grade Board of Assessors Administrative Assistant, request for six additional hours for the Assistant Town Clerk, and a request for additional hours for the Conservation Commission Administrative Assistant.
Second. Any further discussion?
Yeah. Oops.
Hang on, Nathan.
My comment turns based on any of the ones moving forward. I think those shift. I just want to point out, you know, to Tim, if he's going to go back and follow some more information. You know, one of the things that I'd like to see with the public health nurse is actual statistics, you know, how many people actually use those services, what types of services were rendered. I mean, as much clarity as you can give, obviously, you know, there's some HIPAA stuff and some privacy stuff, but kind of the general idea of what people actually use the public health nurse for. You know, and then some demographic information as well, you know, ages, general ages, basically whatever it costs.
Right.
And then the other piece is with the Planning Board. So I don't know, I think Nathan might have been the only other person on the Board of Selectmen at the time when the Personnel Board came in, or when the Planning Board, I'm sorry, when the Planning Board came in to reduce Georgia's hours and increase stretchings. You know, one of the things that we had emphasized then, and Pete, who was Chair at that time, basically assured us that, you know, when the time came to either hire a new Administrator or bring the Administrator's hours back up, that the assistant's hours would go back down. So, you know, I'd like, since you're going to go back to them, I'd like some clarity as to why all of a sudden that's changed. You know, I mean, I know they're going to get some justification, but I'm sure Nathan is probably remembering the same conversation that I was, because we were very specific about that. You know, it was, it was a direct, you know, this person is replacing this person's hours, you know, and as soon as it changes back, you know, both hours are going to shift accordingly. So, you know, so that was, that was why we initially approved it. Anyway, just a comment. Thank you.
Nathan, did you want to add something? I don't know if you could hear Luke.
Yeah, I can hear Luke. I'm happy.
Could you just, hang on just one second, we've got to raise the volume, because I can't hear you.
Well, necessarily, that's the.
Yeah.
I'll even take shots from Philadelphia.
There you go. Okay, Nathan, you should be good.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a couple of comments. One is, I think what I really hoped that I would see if we were adding more hours and things was for our succession planning.
Yes.
Concerns addressed, and I don't see that in here. I also, I think that the reason why we changed this process was because we wanted the Personnel Board not to be reviewing things that the Board of Selectmen weren't going to necessarily support. And there are, there are some things in here that I just definitely don't support. And so my concern is doing them as a slate of positions. I don't support that, so I will have to be saying nay, because we're not, we're not doing what we said we were going to do, which was to evaluate these and decide which ones the Personnel Board should be spending their time doing, because, you know, because time is limited. So again, I would like to see a lot more succession planning in here. There's a lot of rules in here. We cannot pay for them all, we know that for a fact. And so it seems to me like we need to be making some hard decisions at this point, rather than pushing it on to Personnel Board, making the work, and then we make the decision later.
Okay. Could you elaborate on which ones that you're not in support of?
Well, I think we have to go back through them again, but, you know, I think I'd like to understand a lot more about what's going on with the Planning Board. I'm always worried about taking positions that were grant positions and making them, you know, employee positions, you know.
Okay.
That's the Board of Health.
That's the Board of Health, and we did not include that one in our recommendation to be passed on.
Okay.
Okay.
So probably just a little bit of an issue of not being there and not knowing what was displayed again.
Okay, let me, yeah, let me redo it for you. We, we said to the Police Department Administrative Assistant, the 30-hour, let me see, our week Board of Health Assistant, which had been submitted previously.
Yeah, I don't support that.
You don't support that one, okay?
No, because, you know, we talked about this last year, and one of the reasons why we added that position, what we did, was because we wanted two people to be able to put the time more.
Yeah.
This is combining them again, and.
Yes. Yes. They were trying to tell us in their submission, as far as I read it, that this was for succession, so that they would be actually training somebody to take Linda's place. So maybe, you know, I guess we can't really evaluate whether they've just now picked up on the lingo, or if that's what they're actually going to do, but I think that's why we were thinking about going ahead. But we could take that one out, and we don't have to do it tonight.
No, if it's truly succession that I'm willing to forward it on.
That was one of the justifications.
That was one of the justifications, exactly. So, but as I said, we, you know, we can do that on the 10th, because we have time.
Yeah, no, I think actually, if that's what it is, then it's better to get it in earlier.
Okay, all right.
So that we can evaluate it for that.
Okay, then there was a COA outreach worker, the Board of Assessors Administrative Assistant, and the six hours for the Town Clerk, and the Conservation Commission. Those are the ones we are in our, in the motion to send along to Personnel.
Okay, Ken, second. Just third by association, could you list the ones that are not being forwarded?
The ones not are Planning Board and Board of Health, Public Health Nurse.
Okay, I'll vote in favor of this.
Okay, thank you. So any further questions?
Going back to the combined position, I like the idea of the succession plan, but obviously that's not going to be an administrative assistant position anymore. So could we just make sure that when the Personnel Board sees it, they would grade that position accordingly, you know, so we know what the 30 hours are actually going to cost us?
Okay.
Because it's going to cost us, you know, more than two part-time admins and the hourly rate.
The additional cost is 50% of the benefits.
Well, I think what Luke is saying.
No, but he's saying raise the grade.
That the grade in general, that position will be also.
We'll see, yeah.
We don't know. We don't know.
Yeah, that's why we send it to Personnel Board.
That also brings me to the fact that we haven't had a review of the grades for in five years, and we really need to be thinking about doing it again overall, because we're going to be bumping up against, I think, more and more of these, and I think we should get out in front of it. And I don't know how, you know, what resources the Personnel Board would need in order to get started on that, but for the next year at least, I would like to have, see that we've got that done ahead of time.
Okay, no. I think it's easier if you put a little bit away each year, and it's kind of hard to, every fifth year to fund a $15,000 study, you know.
Okay, or, or, you know, let's do.
It's possible, yeah.
Okay.
Excuse me one second, there's a hole in the background, can I just go ahead and just browse, yay, and then I can just run in by and see a town hall in 10 minutes?
Okay, see you then.
All right, Brock, yay.
Arnold, yay.
Reed, yay.
Louis, aye.
I approve.
Okay. Eight, almost 8:45. At 7:30, I am going to do the 7:30 one, just because I think we should anyway. I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing for the entertainment license for Fern's Country Store. I have a memo. First of all, we've got several letters, which we did pay attention to and did some research, and went to, whoops, where is it? The building inspector to get an opinion from him, and I don't know where that went, but at the, at any rate, this, the applicant has withdrawn his application for a regular entertainment license, because we're actually not the board that he would have to apply to for that. That would be Planning Board and/or ZBA. What we could do if he comes to us is give him temporary, one-day licenses, like, such as, you know, we give for farms, Clark Farm and things like that. So, do we have a motion? I need a motion.
I move we close the hearing on Fern's application for an entertainment license.
Second. Uh, all those in favor? Askalulu?
Askalulu, aye.
Louis, aye.
Reed, aye.
Arnold, aye.
And that's enough. Okay.
The library trustees are here.
Are the library trustees here? Oh, let's, let's circle back and do you.
This is forum.
Okay, excellent. Even better. That's number two. Oh, there you are. Um, you...
I'll do it.
Are you guys, have you, are you...
We are recommending for your approval the appointment of Karen Giddings. Um, Giddings.
Giddings.
Giddings, um, to replace me on the Board of Trustees, and if you do approve, I can resign as of August thirty-first, and she will take over September one.
Have you called your meeting to order?
Go ahead.
We were doing a joint meeting, we, at our last trustee's meeting, we did approve her as our trustee, and this is our joint approval, right?
Yes, so, but you need to be...
She needs tonight.
All right, you need to call that meeting... You need to call that a meeting tonight.
Calling the meeting of the library trustees to order.
Okay. That's it, that's it. Good, great. Um, so do I have a motion to appoint Karen Giddings, um, to the position of a library appoint, uh, trustee to replace, um, Priscilla Stevens for term ending, when was your term?
Three years from now.
May twenty-twenty.
Well, the, the appointment is only good until the next election.
It's only good for one year?
Only good until the next election.
To the next...
No matter how long you get left on your terms.
Okay, to the next election.
Yeah, I already think you can run again.
I move that the Board of Selectmen and the remaining members of the Gleason Public Library Board of Trustees vote pursuant to Mass. General Law C., Section Forty-One, Section Eleven, to appoint Karen Giddings of one forty-six Toffett Road to fill the position of library trustee being vacated by Priscilla Stevens through the May twenty-twenty annual town election.
Your second.
Second.
I just wanna say that I know Karen Giddings, I've worked with her also on your, the Library Focus, and I think she'll make a very valuable addition to your Board of Trustees.
She will, sure.
But we will certainly miss you, and we thank you for your service to the town.
Thank you. I'm gonna miss it, too.
Um, so we need to have, we have a second, and we need to have a vote.
A vote here is aye.
Aye.
Okay, I need your names and ayes, because...
Stevens, aye. Stevens and Stevens.
Oh, that's true. Two Stevenses. Luke?
Askalulu, aye.
Louis, aye.
Reed, aye.
Arnold, aye.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And please extend my congratulations to Karen.
Okay.
Uh, cha, 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 cha. We have everybody here for the joint Selectman...
Except the FinCom.
FinCom.
School Committee.
School Committee.
We have sort of a break.
No, FinCom.
Christine Lear, um, one, school committee does not have a quorum. Two, our published meeting is eight fifteen. We were told we were on the agenda at eight fifteen. So I don't know if we should proceed with this, because, uh, those who care about what time our meetings are, because we publish an agenda for eight fifteen, uh, tonight, I don't know if we need to, we, uh, but, again, we don't have a quorum.
Well, you know what? We're, we're gonna take the Public Safety Communications Working Group, uh, portion of our, um, joint meeting first.
Right, thank you.
And then we, that will probably take us until eight fifteen.
All right.
Even though I, I threatened David.
You want to get favor on?
Yeah, would you please? Okay. So we're gonna take a little breather, have a drink of water, oh, yeah, I did get water. I'm going to go get some now. All right. Oh, yeah, we could do cemetery deeds. We'll do that. Go for it.
All right.
That's number nine. We're gonna do cemetery deeds until they come. Um, wherever you wanna be.
Where are they gonna sit? You gonna pull those chairs up?
They're gonna kind of pull, pull up.
Yeah, sure, yeah, we can have those.
All right.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to transfer land in the public burial ground to Eugene and Ruth Brandeis of five seventy-five South Street, number two oh five, at the Green Cemetery Lot D-one-one-two, Graves three and four.
Second. Um, all those in favor?
Askalulu, aye.
Louis, aye.
Reed, aye.
Arnold, aye.
Okay. This is the second one.
Okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to transfer land in the public burial ground to John and Cynthia Nock of forty-one Canterbury Court, at Green Cemetery Lot D-one-one-three, Grave three.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Askalulu, aye.
Louis, aye.
Reed, aye.
Arnold, aye.
Okay, those are done.
Changes in minutes, or can that be done, too?
Um, yeah, it's to the minutes. Waiting for the FinCom. Okay. Um, is there a motion to accept the minutes as amended? Were they amended? Yeah, they were. From what you saw in your original packet.
Oh, to what we have here?
No, what's on the table is the newly amended ones.
Okay. All righty, I move that the, that we accept the minutes of the Board of Selectmen meeting as amended from Tuesday, July twenty-third, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Askalulu, aye.
Louis, aye.
Reed, aye.
Arnold, aye.
Okay. Welcome. So you didn't want to hear about our personnel things, hey?
You want to follow the process.
But I'll, I'll give you the pre-see.
You first, Personnel Board, and you know...
Well, I thought you should know what was coming down the pipe. What, who was asking for what?
That's right. We are interested in that list. We've kinda talked about it before.
Did you get a, oh, you sent the memo?
I didn't, but I will, I will.
If we have that list, I think that would be helpful.
Okay, so the only thing that's not on that, you're gonna add then our last week's one to this list, right?
Yes.
As we talked, okay.
Yes.
So then you'll have a complete list.
Specialist, yep.
And we're gonna start with the Public Safety Communications Working Group request for fall, uh, special town meeting to fund a telecommunications tower.
Sit there. You want? No? I've got that. It's in here somewhere. Yep. I'll hear this. This one, yeah. Okay. Yeah. This is what we're...
Yeah. All right.
Okay. Um, I wanna thank both the Selectmen and FinCom for allowing us time on your agenda tonight, and thanks particularly to FinCom for their helpful input over the past two weeks. I'm here representing the working group advising Tim on the town's implementation of the new public safety communication system, approved and for which funds were appropriated by twenty-seventeen Town Meeting. The group includes myself, Police Chief Fisher, Chief Soros, and Captain Zavatek of the Fire Department, former Selectman Bill Rizzo, and Pete Yell of the Planning Board. Before getting into the details, I wanna note that we understand and acknowledge that it is not unreasonable for abutters to a proposed tower to raise questions and challenge assumptions. Throughout this process, we've worked diligently to develop solutions to a very real problem in a manner that will minimize negative impacts on Carlisle citizens, and to the degree that there may be negative impacts, to have them affect as few citizens as possible. We believe that the proposed tower at one-one-one-oh Westford Street meets this standard, and that in terms of impact on abutters, it is right in line with the three new towers, in terms of number of homeowners affected, visibility, and impact on the land, these three towers already installed, that were approved by twenty-seventeen Town Meeting. Our core responsibility is to all Carlisle citizens and their expressed desire, through Town Meeting and a following ballot vote on the appropriation, to have a system that works effectively to provide mission-critical public safety communications, to allow our first responders to safely do, first responders to safely do their jobs to protect the lives and property of all Carlisle citizens. The working group has been trying to get the new system up and running for over two years. There are a lot of components to this, and it has taken much longer than we anticipated and hoped, but not through lack of trying, as shown in the six-page summary timeline of the project that we provided ahead of this meeting. So we are here to request that you schedule a special town meeting this fall to add two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars and parcel eighteen dash forty dash zero to the list of those on which new towers can be built. We provided you with a detailed six-page explanation of why we are making this request. I'd like to relatively quickly run through those reasons now. It's up to your chairs, but I'm fine waiting to the end for questions from you, or stop me at any point, um, along the way.
Listen to the, you wanna just have the presentation and then ask questions? Well, listen.
Okay. So, why is a tower needed in this part of town? Without a tower, the coverage gaps in western Carlisle caused by ridges west of town center would remain. A tower here is critical to the system functioning. These dead spots were the basis of the original need identified ten years ago, and for which we appropriated the funds in twenty-seventeen. What is the basis of the two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars requested? Uh, I gave you a project, budget summary in advance on page three. It basically explains that the total new site costs for the new site would be four-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars, but that includes a hundred-and-five-thousand dollars already in the budget for the antennas that will go on that tower, and we can remove, subtract from that eighty-thousand dollars in budgeted costs for the ten-twenty-two Westford site, which won't be expended, and that's how you get two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars. The original plan was to have a tower at ten, to add a ten-foot extension to the existing commercial, eighty-foot commercial cellular tower at ten-twenty-two Westford. Why won't that work? First of all, the lease requirements for the ten-foot extension are too complex and leave too many opportunities outside town control for cancellation of the multiple leases involved for such a critical system component. I won't go into the details, but they're, they're, all of the various things in the leases that allow cancellation of it are outlined in detail in the document I gave you. The tower, the eighty-foot tower, even with the ten-foot extension, is barely above tree cover and may prove technically infeasible, infeasible for commercial carriers in the future, allowing them to kick us off the top position, um, per the lease provisions, and we need to be on that top provision for this to work. The site is not lucrative for the tower leaseholder, SBA. There's just one tenant, T-Mobile, which is the holder of the ground lease, and that's part of the complication here, is there's two different owners of this site. There've been no takers for this possible ten-foot extension in the twelve years since the tower was built, and that's why they are proposing us a commercial-based rent. Finally, the proposed lease rental is not within the appropriated budget. It's unreasonable for public safety and would cost the town millions of dollars compared to the alternative over the expected life of the facility. Next question. Are there advantages to the proposed new site besides the long-term economic one and the long-term stability and security of the system due to town control of the site and the tower? There is. We're talking about a higher tower at a higher base ground elevation, and it will provide a guarantee of coverage with expected tree growth over the life of this facility the next fifty years. More importantly, with this tower, we will get better coverage within town borders, and it's very important to understand that when we went to the plan that was approved at twenty-seventeen Town Meeting, as opposed to the earlier plan that had towers at the highest points in town, we noted at that time that we were compromising some on coverage. We will get better coverage with this and won't have to compromise. Also, with this tower, we will get improved coverage for mutual aid in neighboring towns, and this is a critical component of the system. Captain Zavatek explained to, uh, in a meeting last week that it works both ways, both for Carlisle first responders doing mutual aid to other towns, but for example, if someone's coming from Westford to help, under our current system and without a tower here and without this hundred-and-thirty-foot tower, they would not be able to communicate and know where to go en route, um, because there's, there's too many dead zones en route. Next important question is why now? Why are we asking for this now? Why are we asking for a special town meeting as opposed to waiting till twenty-twenty annual Town Meeting? First answer for that is we didn't know that we had this problem until April. We've been struggling for two years to get decent answers from SBA, the tower owner, and only in late April, through the efforts of Tim and Town Council and our consultant, did we finally get answers that led us to the conclusion that we should, we should abandon this site. And we came up with alternative and came to you soon after that. So there was no way prior to April that we could be aware of it, which is why this couldn't have been put on the town meeting we just had. Most importantly, the system has been acknowledged as inadequate, and more importantly, unsafe for a decade. One could argue that, given that, another six to nine months doesn't matter, but on the contrary, we believe that every day we ask our first responders to work with the system that puts their lives in danger is unacceptable. The system won't function without a site in the western part of town, and it cannot be made operational without all the components in place. This is because the switch over from one system to the other is quite complex, and part of our budget is testing and proving the system. Um, we've got guarantees from, um, our consultants and from Motorola that we'll get the coverage that the system is designed to provide, but that testing can only be done once the whole system is up and operational. We've also, over the process of the last two years, gone from a partial microwave and partial fiber connectivity among all the sites to all fiber, luckily at essentially no additional cost. But the most economical way to do that is for the fiber to all be strong at once, and if we're not sure whether this site's gonna be part of this, we'd have to delay the fiber connectivity till next year, which would cost more, or we would have to break it up, and that would cost more. The equipment, from radios to antennas, has already been delivered. Part of the deal with Motorola, which saved several hundreds of thousands of dollars, was the incentive to act at a certain time in terms of signing the contract, so we did that, and they've already shipped all of the radios, some of which, all of, all of which that are, um, dedicated to the Fire Department are not used yet, because one of the changes here is a switch in frequency for the Fire Department, so they can't use any of those. These things have a, um, life cycle of ten to fifteen years, and it's not just that, um, they might break down over time, 'cause obviously they're not breaking down in the boxes, it's that, that the companies that make these things, including Motorola, stop servicing them at a certain point. So the longer we get this system operational, the more we're wasting of the life cycle of this equipment. And lastly, just sort of a general rule of thumb, if you wait six to nine months, you're gonna pay more, 'cause things always cost more when you're dealing with construction as you move forward. We found that the price of steel has fluctuated much more dramatically than anyone could have anticipated, not anticipating a trade war that has a big impact on something like that. Question that FinCom asked, um, when we met with them a couple weeks ago, was questioning whether it made more sense to enter into a lease arrangement on the existing site, because we're not then locked into, um, the expense on a tower, and the concern is, is that the payback over time and the savings beyond that would not happen if it turned out the tower wasn't, was no longer useful. And we all know that advances in cellular technology are happening all the time. So when we did this, through this whole process, we've basically looked at all the, and our consultant has been involved in a lot of them, all of the New England towns that have recently upgraded their systems, some of whom are spending significantly more money than we're spending here with lots of redundancy, are all doing it with tower-based systems. We also spoke with the officials that are involved in FirstNet, which is a federally-approved nationwide system for federal emergency communication that's been given to AT&T, and that entire system is tower-based, and AT&T has actually approached us, um, in interest in getting on some of the towers. But if, if the government is about to invest, this is a whole new system that's about to be started, and, and if it's gonna be tower-based, it, it seems pretty clear that this is the technology that will still be around. We all know about cellular, uh, technology advances, progressions from four-G to five-G to six-G, and the increased demand for bandwidth, um, but all those technological improvements have not led to abandonment of towers, instead they've led to additional towers being sought by these providers. And this is essentially because it's all radio communications, and radio waves act like radio waves, and no advances in technology are gonna change the fact that it's line of sight from the broadcast point to the receiver, and for that you need towers. Lastly, our public radio system, as I said before when I was talking about mutual aid, does not operate in a vacuum. We need to... of sight from the broadcast point to the receiver, and for that, you need towers. Lastly, our public radio system, as I said before when I was talking about mutual aid, does not operate in a vacuum. We need to be able to communicate with all our neighbors, and so the frequencies and the equipment and, and all of that need to work with those around us. There is no incentive for anybody to sort of try to, you know, be the first adopter of some new technology to see if it's going to work because everybody is using this stuff, and no offense to the police and fire here, but it tends to be a very conservative group of people who like what's worked and stick with it. So our belief is that this tower, based on everything we know, that this tower will be in use for 50, maybe 100 years, and that the investment and the savings over that time will be realized. Last thing I will say is, and again, this is all quickly summarizing much more detail that I provided you, is we, as I said, we need a tower in this part of town. It just so happens that this site is the only town-owned site anywhere in the western side of town where, essentially that the town owns. This is the only town-owned site. There are few town-owned sites in the very northwest or the southwest that are conservation lands, and one town-owned site right on the border with Concord that's in the middle of the swamp, which essentially means that it's one of the lowest points in town. So this is literally the only place in town this can happen, and it's quite fortuitous that we happen to own this property and that it's possible to do this. And again, there's more details in, in the rest of the stuff, but maybe best if there's questions at this point.
Anybody have questions? Scott?
One of the key questions when we met with FinCom was about the lease and the risk of the cancellation. I'm looking at the document we provided, and you specify, you know, 120 days prior notice. Can you just recap the key lease provisions around cancellations?
Sure. So I'll just read from the more detailed report. SBA, which is the tower owner, may choose not to renew our lease without cause on 120 days' notice prior to each five-year renewal period. The underlying lease with the landowner, this is the lease between SBA and the landowner, allows SBA to cancel that lease within 30 days' notice of any renewal period without cause, and separately to cancel the lease with the landowner with 90 days' notice if they determine the site no longer serves its needs for either economic or technological reasons. And it's not clear to me, and we didn't want to spend any more time with Town Council trying to sort this out, but the homeowners, the landowner's five-year lease is, period is different, would be different from the town's five-year lease period, so it's actually more than every five years that the frequency would be that the whole thing could fall apart. Anyway, so, I mean, the fact that they state that they could cancel the lease for either economic or technological reasons is extremely problematical. And on top of all this, they've been, I mean, it's taken us two years to get straight answers from them, and in many cases, they, when they finally did give us answers, it turned out months or two months later that the answers they gave us were not complete. And so they sent us a lease, and it said, you know, the lease was with them, and it was for $500 a month. And months later, when they finally got a, Town Council was able to connect with them, it was like, oh, well, but there's also a lease with T-Mobile, which owns the ground lease, and that's another $500. There also is a provision in our lease that we would not be able to communicate at all with our own citizen about anything at all relating to this site, which strikes us as problematical, given that it's a Carlisle citizen and we'd be there. So we, we don't feel at all comfortable with, with this. One question that was raised at some point was 871 Bedford Road, which is another commercial tower in town on which the town has an antenna, is also with SBA, and why are we, don't we share the same concerns there as we do here? Several reasons, one of which is that the landowner had, has, part of her lease requires that they lease the site to the town for essentially no money. Secondly, it's a 190-foot tower, so there's a huge investment there. It has four carriers on it, so there's a huge revenue for them. And we are located at, I think, 127 feet on that tower, which puts us, all of the carriers are the top 50, 60 feet of the tower, so we're not in the way of anywhere that a commercial carrier would want to be, so there's no reason for them to kick us off. We're not in a, in a place where they could get more revenue. So this is very unique to this site. The fact that there are multiple leaseholders on the site is also unique. I checked with our consultant, and he said that's extremely rare, that essentially because of all this complexity, tower owners tend to want to control the ground lease. So this just happens to be a terrible lease situation that we were not aware of originally.
Well, the other question I had is, you mentioned in the document, with proper maintenance, what, what is budgeted or wouldn't budgeted for maintenance on the tower?
I hadn't focused on this, but Nancy Pierce had submitted something, and apparently in the site plan review application, the tower company that helped fill it out said that they expected the maintenance might be about $2,000 a year. I don't know that it would be that much. These are, the, the tower is just galvanized steel, there's no painting, no nothing, so it's mostly a matter of just making sure that everything's attached firmly on a regular maintenance schedule. One thing that I think it's important to note is, since the 1022, we're talking about leasing, one may naturally assume that that means that you're just paying the lease and everything's covered, but in fact, what's proposed, what was proposed there was for the town to put up a 10-foot extension, and the town would be fully responsible for that 10-foot extension, and it would require all the same maintenance and, and having a crane to go up and deal with the maintenance every single time. So my guess is that there's essentially, I mean, without really knowing, but there's, I think for the sake of this discussion, there's essentially no difference in what the town's cost for maintenance would be between a lease at 1022 and our own tower.
Just looking at questions.
Read the documentation.
Yeah, I read the documentation too. Pretty detailed.
One other, one other thing I would note in this is, in response to something that Nancy Pierce was kind enough to copy me on when she sent it to the Chair of FinCom yesterday, which is a concern about property values. I checked with the, our consultant today and confirmed that for public safety, it's very important to note that any concern that anyone has about radio frequency emissions from towers, aside from the fact that the FCC judges any antenna above 30 feet as being not an issue.
Again, because of line of sight, going out is not going down.
But aside from that, cellular communications on a tower is relatively constant, whereas public safety is very intermittent. And most importantly, this, this particular site, because of the configuration of the system, is a receive-only site, so there are absolutely no radio frequency emissions, there will be no radio frequency emissions from this site. I understand that, you know, in terms of what's out there about, claims about impacts on property values, isn't always, you know, based on absolute science, but, you know, if it impacts people's beliefs, it's an issue. But in this particular case, and, and any research about this stuff is based on cellular towers, and it's all, you know, in any event, I think it's important to note that there's no radio, there will be no radio frequency emissions from the public safety equipment on this tower.
Questions from FinCom? I don't have further, a lot of what he wrote was, we had met, and I brought questions, so I appreciate you going through the diligence of great detail answering them.
So the decision before us tonight is not whether to build the tower or not, it is whether we should bring it to town meeting, for town meeting to decide whether to build the tower or not. And of course, you guys need to weigh in because of the financial aspects, and because in fact, it did not come in at April, in April, when we're going to weigh everything else. It is kind of mid-year, and we need to weigh in because it's our, our motion, I guess. Where does FinCom, feel like it's standing at this point about, around this?
You haven't taken a position?
You have not taken a position.
Not on the potential warrant?
Yeah. Yeah, well, we have to make a decision rather shortly because we need to open the warrant.
Our decision is whether or not we have a special town meeting, not whether or not we support it.
That's correct. Exactly. That's what the conversation is. That's what I was trying to say. Exactly.
So my, my comment in the town meeting piece of it, and we've had this conversation before within FinCom, so we haven't taken a position one way or the other, but in general, I think we hold, looking at bringing in things of financial concerns midstream, is something we tend not to, we tend to discourage, because what we're not doing is taking a look at kind of a budgetary impact holistically, and essentially doing trade-offs across that. So I think that's one of the things that in our conversation I highlighted, and I think that the balance of this, I think in part, in part what David's highlighted too, is yes, you, I think you said you understand that, but I think what the group is highlighting as well is the aspect of public safety, you know, where you put that, you know, that balance. So that's, that's really the only comment that I would have, is that in general, I think this happened last year with the regional school, you know, doing a special town meeting, and, you know, we, we don't kind of support this kind of midstream type of introduction for, for budget, because we have a process that helps us to properly manage across all of the different departments.
And it, you said, we take that very seriously, and, you know, one can't predict in terms of where we would have been at 2017, but if we've been aware of these issues with the lease then, the difference between the request for a, you know, 2.9 million and 3.1 million approximately appropriation didn't, you know, doesn't strike us as being something that would be, you know, would have been the difference between whether or not town meeting supported this, and the support for this was, was quite strong. There were maybe one or two handful of nays, I believe, is what the mosquito said.
Yeah, I think the point around is less of whether they would support it or not, but we as FinCom, meeting at the budget, would have said, hey, maybe we shouldn't, we shouldn't support XYZ article or warrant so that we prioritize this.
No, I understand.
I think, to your point, I mean, if we have this town meeting and we support it, we're already supporting this additional funding in our budget, which means there's other things we may have wanted to do that we're not, we're going to just have to not do.
That's right.
Yeah.
We can't do this and the other things that may come up later.
That's correct. On the other hand...
We've already taken a chunk away, which, in a significant chunk.
That, that was what, yeah, I was going to say, on the other hand, there will be a lot of money that will have been expended if we don't get this done properly. That will all have been wasted, and so I'm not sure.
Yeah, it just means we're going to have to make some really hard decisions as the year goes on.
Yeah.
And from a very...
Getting back to the personnel discussion we just had.
Yes.
Hard decisions we're going to have to make.
And from a very technical position, as I understand it, the 2.9 million has not been put forth in a long-term bond yet. It's been short-term bond, anticipation notes. I couldn't remember the A. It's been being rolled over, and the plan at this point is to not do a long-term bond until sometime next year, so that if this is approved at town, at a, at a special town meeting, it could be, it would just be rolled into that, and because there hasn't been an all, already a long-term bond for this, there's no additional bonding costs for a separate bond to deal with this, because it'll all be part of a bond that's covering the 2.9, this, and, and several other things in the neighborhood of $4 million, I believe.
And I don't see, I mean, I'm trying to think what would, first, if we were to delay this until the April town meeting, what would change? You know, we say, one of the downsides of interim decisions like this is that it preempts that money from, it tells everybody else, no, you can't, you're not going to have use of that money, we've already spent it. On the other hand, we've got four-fifths of a system built, essentially built. Is it, what feasibly could change in the next six months that might change the necessity to do this? And I can't think of anything. And so I, I don't see, I mean, well, granted on a, for a policy basis, doing these kinds of things should be discouraged. On the other hand, there doesn't seem to be a great advantage to waiting.
Do you want to take comments from the public?
I've taken the comments from the public. Well, are we going to, we need to make a decision about whether we're going to call a town, special town meeting or not.
With, with the understanding that a town meeting can always be canceled.
It can.
Until it's posted.
Yeah, but you can't, you know, yes.
Well, then the moderator and the clerk have to show up. Everyone else can kind of...
Yeah, right. We've done that.
We've done that. Been there, done that. Bought the T-shirt.
I think we need to have a special town meeting.
Okay. Are you willing to make a motion to that effect?
We need to have a date and a time.
I think we do.
October 7th.
October 7th.
7 o'clock, October 7:30, October 7th.
It's item one in the town administrator's report.
October 7th.
We checked the date of October 7th.
Pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 39, Section 10, the Board of Selectmen called for a special town meeting to be held on Monday, October 7, 2019, at 7 o'clock PM in Cory Auditorium at the public school.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
I would just, if I could, I would just note that I've been asked to sit down on the Complete Streets meetings, and one of the things that was promised at annual town meeting was to do some public outreach as part of that and public presentations, and so one of the thoughts was rather than try to do two different public things, would be to include that on that same evening. Tim had talked to the moderator with the possibility that you would open the town meeting, do the business, close the town meeting, but people would be there already, and then do the Complete Streets presentation. The advantage of that is it increases the likelihood that we'll have a quorum, and it increases the likelihood that there'll be more people there to hear the Complete Streets and provide their input, so it seemed like a good convergence.
Okay. We have a, a motion. Did I hear a second?
You did.
No further discussion? I just want to reiterate that this motion that we're voting on is to have a special town meeting. It is not a motion to build the tower. There will be additional open discussions about that. I'm sure there'll be informational, more informational meetings, et cetera, before that meeting.
And there will be a town meeting to discuss.
And there'll be a town meeting.
Yes. One thing I would suggest, I handed out a couple of copies of, of the various things that I'd provided to you all, but that I, with your approval, I would work with Jen, and we could get those posted to the town website, so everybody would have access to those. And the only other thing I would say to, and I've talked to a couple of the abutters previously, is that I'm more than willing to sit down with any of them and go over these things and respond to their questions in the coming weeks.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor of holding a special town meeting on October 7?
Round I.
Arnold, I.
Reed, I.
Louis, I.
That's all I.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, related to that, it seems like we should also consider whether there's anything that's non-financial that we might be able to do at that meeting, like the Monroe Hill Public Way, you know, approval, or something else like that, so that we...
So we can sweep a few other things in, yes, in there that...
Yeah. Avoided a third night.
Give it the three nights?
Yeah. Yeah.
Right. Okay.
The clause two weeks from tonight.
Now, we can have the school committee join us as well. Now, you can have the school committee join us as well. It's not going, it's quite as well as I would.
We don't have a car.
That's okay.
I don't think you have to.
You don't have to.
All right.
It's just important that, you know, we are able to meet together and have conversations. Welcome. So Victor, I'm going to let you lead off.
Sure. So I think this, one of the things that we wanted to discuss, and we had a short discussion earlier, as FinCom, in terms of this coming up coming years budget process and kind of how we would kind of navigate that as well as, you know, incorporating lots of feedback from last year. I think last year we, I think things went, you know, quite well relative to, every year we've got to build upon our learnings and such. So by and large, I think what we had, had going to discuss is a process is fairly similar to last year. The budget letter going out, having a two-day session with such all of the different departments and strongly encouraging the OS to attend those and be a part of those and had varied attendance the last couple of years in that, leading into kind of a session at the end of the, in the beginning of December to really kind of talk about priorities and what, not priorities, but essentially the guidance that we've got submitted. And then obviously there's a process after that. I think the other points that would be good for discussion, but that's just kind of overlaying. So roughly over that time, you had three to four times points between the fourth supplement and FinCom as we did last year. But I think in there, I think part, part of the discussion we actually highlighted was, one of the challenges last year was really around our ability as FinCom really to think through, again, that holistic look at the budget when warrants are being, you know, discussed like, you know, the week before. So I think our recommendations really, and this could be a point of discussion for tonight, is really around setting a date, very similar to what FinCom did and we agreed to, as Board of Selectmen think, at the beginning of the process last year in terms of personnel, has to be reviewed and through the process by the end of January. And when something came and didn't meet that, FinCom held and said, hey, you know, that's how, that's the process we need to get to. Similarly with the warrants, we discussed Concord, whose, whose timing is a little bit before us, but they closed at the beginning of January in terms of their warrant. And for us to have maybe a similar type of date, you know, mid, end of January to have that, and that allows essentially a lot of the processes to kind of work through where we had, can have the discussions, have the knock on wood, you know, finance director work out things in terms of bonds and things like that in that process as opposed to last year. It's just, it just wasn't very difficult to do any of that as we're considering things last minute. So I think that was a, one topic that we thought would be good for a conversation tonight. And then the third one is really around, and this is with the school and the three groups in terms of how do we want to see the budget? I think last year was, was good in terms of what we saw, but what other aspects of the budget and the transparency, you know, different things that we wanted to be able to foster discussions? And I know that Scott has already been having some conversations around that in our meeting upstairs. He said he'll, he'll kind of follow up with that in terms of kind of a recommendation, in terms of the discussion with the schools and whatnot and how we do that. So I think for us tonight, you know, in my mind, I think alignment in terms of the overall process as well as this whole aspect of these dates around closing the warrants and things like that might be good discussion points for, for this first touch point, but certainly open to anything else that you thought would be good to discuss for this evening.
Okay. There was, you know, there's this draft thing that our last financial.
Yes.
Director.
You have it there?
We have it.
Gave us and it, one thing is it shows joint capital and budget work session on Saturdays. Is, is there any consideration? Yeah, I see Scott shaking his head.
We've not much of a, really not.
Okay, so, okay, so that's, that, I guess that's where I'm.
Talk through some of this.
I think that was the first draft. It's the first draft.
Yeah.
And we had never seen it or viewed it or provided input to it.
Yeah.
And it doesn't really marry with the process we have.
That's right. And that's what we're kind of talking about upstairs before this meeting.
All right. So do you have, will you be giving us then a.
A proposed.
A proposed thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Verbally, we kind of aligned on it, discussed it and can propose it to you verbally and I can put documentation to it. But the first thing I will highlight, because, you know, I have it here.
Okay.
Making notes as we're discussing, I think the first four steps are great. This whole aspect of the personnel process and handling of that, it seems like, well, obviously you had that discussion tonight, you're, you know, kind of working down that vein. And we know that the last two, I say the last two years because I've only been on the board for two years, but I'm sure it's the past. It's like, this whole thing of personnel's always been a challenge.
Yeah, what's our date now? What is the date? We have a date in there.
October 15.
October 15, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, then it could come to FinCom right within that process and be able to discuss which is, if we did that, that'd be great.
Right. Just one question if I can, because the next thing was warrants. How late can a citizen put a warrant on? I just worry that if we say no, it doesn't take it.
That's right.
Are we opening up for more citizen warrants?
If you have a deadline that, that's well advertised, you can make that the cutoff.
For a citizen.
In theory, until the warrants close, the board can add articles to it. So, yeah, I think the idea is to have a, a line in the sand by which, a date certain for people to submit requests and then there won't be people coming in at the last minute with, oh, did you have this or?
Do they have to adhere to that same deadline?
You can have a deadline for citizens petitions, yeah. You can say, you know, January 15th or.
Well, can we differentiate between warrant articles requiring money and warrant articles that don't require money?
I think that's.
Yeah.
Because there's.
I'd be inclined not to.
I would be.
Well, I mean, just because.
My FinCom party, but I would agree. I think that's great execution. Then there would, there would have to be a determination that there is no.
Yeah. Somehow everything seems to have an impact.
It does. At the end of the day.
I mean, even if it's just more hours of staff time in order to deal with the petition, we just, you never know what might be in there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, looks good to know. So, I would to kind of lay out kind of the broad, you know, kind of points within the process. I think we had discussed it, sending out kind of our budgetary kickoff letter roughly about the week of September, the week of the 16th. And in between then and when we have our two-day kind of marathon session, I'm sure that the Board of Selectmen each year kind of goes to, hey, what are the priorities within that? And we didn't feel that there's necessarily a need for a big meeting on that, but if Barney is, you know, obviously is a representative for FinCom as you're participating in the meetings to, to bring that into the conversation as we're having the discussions, that, that was a way that we could kind of bridge that communication there. And then we have our two-day session, 28th and the 30th. So it's Monday, Wednesday at the end of October, which is roughly the same week that we had in last year. We have kind of avoided the, we did around Halloween, but Halloween's a little bit later this year. So in terms of the Thursday, it's a Thursday as opposed to a Friday.
We're pretty much in, that's like data collection mode for us.
Yep.
It's really, the bulk of it is October and then we, there's some follow-on discussions in November. So, and then November is when we're taking the pieces and putting them together into the budget. And so at that point, we want to have information from departments and any high-level direction strategically from the Board of Selectmen, the school committee, what have you.
Yep.
And then December is when we have working sessions where we sit down and go through the first draft budget with the Board of Selectmen, taking all that into account.
So once we processed it, we had like the week of the 10th for a meeting with Board of Selectmen, working meeting. And then.
10th of December?
Yes.
December.
Okay.
Sorry. Not October. And then shooting for a memo and we were saying, well, should we send it after the holidays, before the holidays? It's like, but we're really not going to work on it between, you know, the 17th and through the holidays and send it. So send it earlier. So the week of the 17th, we'd send the memo, you know, departments read it, that's fine. If they don't read it till the beginning of next year, then it's fine. It's two.
And that's the, this is always confused.
This guidance.
This, the guideline budget.
That's right.
That's the budget where we basically ask people to work toward this budget, but then there's follow-on to that. That's the first stab at the budget, but people certainly come back with new information, updated requests, incomplete information. So the back half, January, February, we're refining that budget recommendation.
Yep.
Scott, does long-term cap fall in the same schedule?
Yeah. Maybe a little sooner because we want to have a more final number into FinCom for the guideline. We don't want that number to change too much after December.
And so after we have those kind of, any, and actually we didn't have a lot of them last year in terms of follow-ups, but it depends.
Ninety-eight percent accurate and then you're just waiting on some, like last year, we were waiting on a lot of personnel issues and then trying to figure out what are the warrants, how much are they going to be, what would be the fiscal impact if the warrant, because we assume all the warrants pass. So most of that backend is waiting for those things that we would advocate, bringing the deadline in so that we can put the budget together, not have to send it to the printer like in a.
That's right.
The fastest car possible to get it done.
Yeah. I think that's where kind of we've kind of led into the whole aspect of the warrant, you know, mid to end of January, you have kind of the, the close there. We can flush out any discussions. We'll have a meeting with the Board of Selectmen, another working meeting in February and we're targeting, help Tim here, is like, get this thing to the printer, targeting like mid, mid, mid-March. Last year we kind of really kind of pushed it into April, which I think in past years it's been March and try to get it to that. But to try to ratchet it back to where we're kind of targeting to that.
So would there, would it be, would it make sense for us to have like a, we need to know if you want to put a warrant and we need to have a, kind of an accurate estimate of the cost by mid-November so that we can go through that? Just, it's draft form, right? So that we can have some numbers in there and then we can talk about the priorities of those so that if there are ones that we just definitely, obviously, you know, I mean, there's some that we may just decide not to put in, right? And we can do that by mid-December without having had a lot of work go into it. And then like all final warrants have to be in by, you know, the final copy by the middle or end of January or something, but by, by then there's nothing that's surprising to us, right? We know how much and we know basically what.
Yeah. In part, I think that aspect of how much is, you know, some of the stuff that kind of flowed in was that you kind of knew was there, but they didn't have final numbers exactly how much it costs and things like this. And then you're kind of spinning around through March and April, wait for, oh, we need a little bit more time for that.
Right. And that's, and that's kind of the critical piece, right? Having everything else is being flushed out.
Without any information.
If you recall, for our, selfishly, we have to write the budget letter, which has to have the numbers, which assume all the warrants pass, so we need to know all the numbers for all the warrants so that we can pull those numbers together.
Mm-hmm.
And to be doing that in April is recipe for errors.
Yep.
It's just too rushed. And that, so we, selfishly, we need the numbers earlier just so that we can finalize the budget materials for the warrant, which need to then go print.
But your guidance in December is.
That's just the operating.
Just the operating, has nothing to do with these things. So maybe I'm pushing a little bit too fast, but.
But we, we make, it's separate, but it's all money.
Right.
Yeah, that's right. It's a different.
Funny how that works.
But, you know, if we knew there's a large warrant that's likely, and we think it's likely to be approved, we might make some different decisions or recommendations on the others. So the more we, the better the picture we have, the better the recommendation can be to do that.
I was thinking of that when we had said November is okay. So then, then you can have, such as thinking about if you have the overall number kind of in pencil and you're now kind of processing that as you're kind of working the guidance. I think there's, there is definitely value.
Get just a short description of it and a cost.
Yeah. But even the letter that goes out in September, as we've done the last couple of years, has a questionnaire for departments that asks.
That's right.
If they have any ideas of warrants and that could then be discussed in October too. That doesn't cover the whole field, of course, but it's a lot of.
That's right.
Ideally, we'd have everything surfaced and an approximation of the cost in October when we're meeting with the departments. That's why we want personnel issues to be more front-loaded so when we're hearing the request for budget, there's not this, and we might have additional staff.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Because usually that's one of the biggest deltas from year to year is staffing. So.
Yeah, I think one of the, the things that I would change most about last year, and I guess it's my fault because I was the chair last year, was we didn't give our feedback to warrants that we didn't support nearly early enough. I mean, there were warrants that just had gone on, you know? And so I'd, I'd like just to make sure that we do it a lot earlier this year.
Can we talk about long-term caps? We, I have, we haven't gotten it to you yet, but there's a proposal for a continuing warrant for maintenance, for instance, that would possibly be covering some of the stuff that comes in to the long-term caps. And, and then in the past, it seems to me we've had a lot of things that don't, that just recurring and they don't strike me as what long-term caps was really intended to address. And can we address that this year and, you know, would?
That's a question for long-term caps.
Yeah. Well, it's a, no, it's a question for us. It's a question for these two bodies as well to direct long-term caps, I would say. Because it's governance and, and I think the earlier we make this decision and let people know what that decision is, the better it'll be for everybody as well to understand how to act.
The bylaws state, what, $10,000 in the life of over, so that's the bylaw.
Yes, that's the bylaw. So, I mean, we're going to have, if we're going to have a special town meeting, we could change that bylaw.
Well, it's $10,000 per item? And a life of how long?
I think it's.
Five years.
But there's a lot that could fall into that, right?
Yeah.
Isn't it? I mean, you could, what does that mean? It's, it's a, it's a, it's hard in being on long trap, long-term caps, it's hard to navigate and there's, I'm sure there's history behind the gentleman, but it's hard to navigate what should be in and what should be out.
And then we've had.
What's your replacement cycle on computers at the school?
It's five years.
It's five years?
So if it was always five years per DUCI guideline, we've tried to push it out six, but five is the state standard.
But is that for, you know, you take the whole budget, it's over 10,000. If you take the gentleman, it's not, it's.
Yeah.
So one of the discussions is should the recurring technology be part of the operating budget or should that be long-term caps? But a lot of the long-term caps budget is like.
It's like that.
You take out all that stuff, you're left with like police cruisers and, right, there's.
Well, even the police cruisers, you know, I'm not sure those are even lasting for five years, are they? Or is it every three years that we're getting a new police cruiser?
Right. So it's a question whether we have long-term caps.
I'm wondering, I'm starting to wonder, I'm at the, you know, if we should be phasing that out and doing, looking at a different way of handling large.
So there's a lot that can go, you could probably put it in the operating budget and stuff.
A lot of, yeah, a lot of it could go in the operating.
Could you put a car in?
I would, if it's, if it's a car that's, you know, I wouldn't maybe for DPW because they don't ask for one every year.
Right.
You know?
Or chipper.
Or a chipper, exactly.
Those last like four years.
You know? But I'm, I'm thinking of things that we see over and over and over and over and over again.
Yeah, but then it, it also then just makes it so that it's kind of an automatic thing Yeah, but then it also then just makes it so that it's kind of an automatic thing, whereas like the police cruiser, there have been years where we've said, no.
That's up to base.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a good argument for that. Of course, and that's a forty or fifty thousand dollar. It's not a, you know, a ten thousand dollar, five thousand dollar item. So, or a bunch of five thousand dollar items.
I mean, long-term caps is typically, what, two hundred and sixty to three hundred thousand dollars. So it's, it's a, you know, one percent of the, less than one percent of the budget. And there's stuff in there that you could see, we say, could live elsewhere. And we have a committee of seven people. It's a bit of a weird, having been on it for this, my second year, it's a bit of a weird thing. But I don't know the right way. There might be standards around what long-term caps needs to be.
I don't either. But I also know that long-term caps kept on deferring the maintenance on the school elevator. When it's really not a long-term cap, that was a maintenance thing in certain respects. So and if we
It's capital expenditure.
Well, it is, well.
It's not a purchase. It's maintenance.
The issue that came with long-term caps was replacing.
Yes.
Well, no, but it was not maintenance.
No.
The thing was, the thing that was deferred wasn't a purchase, it was maintenance.
Yeah, but that wasn't long-term caps, a decision. I've gone five years. We were never asked to
Replacement is, but not
Replacement is what it was.
Replacement was deferred under long-term caps.
Okay, for seven years?
Long-term caps.
Yeah, there was maintenance done on the elevator.
Yes, there was maintenance done on it.
And that was done, that wasn't through the long-term caps budget. You know, you can also say it was, the replacement was deferred, or other things were prioritized over that particular thing.
Right.
You're not going to escape that dilemma.
It's like maintenance on a vehicle. It's like maintenance on a vehicle, and eventually you need to replace the vehicle.
And we took, I mean, basically, we decided it was worth the risk of seeing if it's going to last longer, and it didn't work out. But we can't look back and say we did the wrong thing. It made sense at the time.
They were really specific. That's another example, something that's in long-term caps.
Okay.
You know, and, I don't know, could that live in an operating budget? I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know that we're going to figure it out tonight. I think we should talk about
But some of the maintenance things, and I guess I'm including replacement in that, I think should, could then properly be in that continuing warrant article, which then can also save a little bit more for a rainy day, so that if we defer the replacement, you know, for whatever reasons, we then would still have enough somewhere so that we're not doing deficit spending or doing something else.
That would be a new
It means that it's
That would be a new thing, if proposed, and that would replace like a long-term caps.
Yeah. It would, you would, it would, the funding would last three to five years, so that if you don't spend it this year, you can still spend it on maintenance the next year, or the year after that. And then you could start, we could start building it up because we know we have, what, two million dollars, probably good two million dollars of HVAC in town. This is not the only elevator in town that we need to be thinking about. We've got roofs all over town. We have probably a forty thousand dollar little repair, you know, right here in this one. And we, you know, you know, we can't
I think we just need to be really careful when we're doing this, if we're doing something like that. You know, my concern is that if we're saying we're going to do roof repair, and that's listed as one of the types of things that we're asking town for at that town meeting, I have a, if we defer that, I have a real problem if the next year or two years later, we're going back and we're saying we need forty thousand dollars for that roof repair.
No, the idea is that we would have that money already.
You have to, I just want to make sure we're not building a fund that we're spending on all different types of things, but not what we're actually at town meeting, saying this is what we need the money for.
It seems like you could go two different ways, right, the recurring, or you could just make everything except for warrant articles.
Yeah, well, we also have maintenance in a lot of budgets. We don't know where all that maintenance, you know, very often, I think it hasn't been spent on building maintenance, for sure. It might have been spent on truck maintenance and things like that.
Operating, but we talked about doing the central maintenance budget once we're the facility manager. So maybe, I don't know if that's on the table through this year. That might be a point
That was kind of what this was.
So if you had a central maintenance budget and the operating budget, that's a discretion of the facility manager. And that facility manager then reports out how it's spent.
That's, that's what the idea is. That's exactly what the idea is.
But there's stuff that doesn't fall within that bucket, right? So there's, there's a lot of
Yeah, okay.
I think that's
Is that something you want FinCom to look at and make a recommendation on in terms of long-term caps?
I think, I think it should be thought of in tandem.
In tandem with?
With, with the maintenance, a maintenance, centralized maintenance budget and long-term caps, because long-term caps are things, you know, like roof repairs and things like that. And if we can, if we have a facilities manager, which we now have, who can look out and say, well, you know, in the next five years, we're going to have this and this and this, and then the next ten years, we're going to have that, and then twenty, we're going to have this, we can then, we have an inventory of what we need to be looking out for.
Well, then there was, and I don't know, the IT committee was the other, we had talked about last year, where if there was the similar to function for facilities, IT that looked at a lot of the requests that come through, some come through operating, some come through long-term caps.
So I've asked for the IT committee to kind of be
We had actually proposed it like five or six years ago, that we consolidated all.
And there was some movement early on, and I know another committee, right?
Yes.
But there is a lot of expenses that are ad hoc in operating budgets, some might be long-term. It's a similar thing where, is it long-term caps? Is it, and then you have all these silos making IT decisions, telephones, the classings that span town apartments, town buildings, and some kind of central plan.
Yep.
So that we're not upgrading phones over there and doing
And a different system over there, and then
So I think this has been part of the discussions, this has come up before. And so we'll take the action, you know, talk about this, anything along the centralized maintenance budget.
Are you on long-term caps again this year, or is someone else from the course?
No, you.
Maybe me.
Yeah. No, I'm on municipal facilities. Thank you very much.
Okay.
That's enough.
So why don't I, I will, if you're like the liaison, let me reach out to you.
No, he's a member. He's not a liaison, he's
Oh, he's a member, so
I'm a member?
Yes.
Okay, I'm a member.
So let's
Remember.
I think between us, we can represent three committees. But we can have some high-level discussions and then discuss a bit long-term caps and then take over that.
Okay, great.
You know, a lot of organizations have very specific definitions of what's a long-term cap.
And we have a bylaw, so whatever we decide, we have to make sure it lives within the bylaw, and lives within whatever municipal standards there are.
Or we change the bylaw.
And, and or
But I don't know, are there standards that we should apply as a town for long-term caps?
We could, we could look around and see what other people, could, could we get some report from somewhere that, about what other people
I think some we could ask our auditors, too.
Yeah, that's a good idea. That's a good idea, so that we're not reinventing the wheel. Long-term caps. Oh, I guess I am the
Municipal Facilities Committee.
Oh, well, so what, did, I thought Nathan
I know, I thought he did, maybe this is old. This is five twenty-eight.
Okay, we have to double-check who's on the long-term, whether it's Nathan or me. But I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure it was you.
I'm fine.
You said you wanted to do it. And I said, knock yourself out.
So to look at that schedule?
Yeah.
Yeah, you'll Now, have we concluded this evening, the hard stop date on the closing of the warrant?
Remember, remember, right?
I'm not saying closing of the warrant. I was just saying warrant, you know, a brief description of the cost of warrants have to be in by, I was saying, mid-November.
Right.
In certain senses, I think, I think this broadly, I think that's, well, I think the departments actually in their questionnaire have that question. So we'll have that piece plus whatever else.
So it wouldn't be that hard for them to take that and put it into something else with a number within a month?
That's right. It's the same question. Are you considering any warrants? And if so, how much?
Yeah, but that's, okay, those are, you're talking about departments, and then there's
That's right, but then there's a
There's a whole bunch of
That's right.
Whole other group.
So I think it's still important to communicate more broadly. But to say, a part of it will be part of the process, I think the communication will cover off.
So you could say, and keep in mind, after November fifteenth, we're not going to accept any, the Board of Select won't accept anymore.
Give us that date.
December, well, November, whatever.
Yeah, and
Should pick a Friday.
Nathan, just to be clear, are you talking about departments or departments and committees?
I'm talking about any warrant article that you want to have. We need to know a description of it and a cost.
By
November.
By the middle of November. It doesn't have to be all flushed out. It's just a couple sentences. What is it you want to do, and how much is it going to cost?
And, and you're saying you would not be able to submit something
After that.
after that date? Which is a significant departure
Unless Scott and Victor said you could.
You know we won't.
We're willing to take mid-January.
I think mid-January, mid-January might be more realistic for some of the
I think you should put out the call.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I'm not, I'm not saying that the wording has to be right. I'm not saying that everything
Not saying close it. It's just saying
Enough, we need to know enough to know whether or not we would support it or not.
Yeah.
Right?
I think there's all things we would
All right, and in what
differently this year than we did.
Yes.
You do need to discuss, not the
Affirm.
Date to close
Yes.
Doesn't need to happen tonight, but, you know, sometime by end of October, so you can publicize it and get it out there.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, we do, we do it last time after town meeting.
And we need a member from you, a liaison member for, for the Municipal Facilities Committee. Well, we don't, oh, eight o'clock on Tuesday morning. Every Tuesday, eight o'clock.
It takes minutes.
That's
You're meeting every Tuesday?
Every Tuesday we meet.
Daytime meetings are tough.
Yeah, well, this is early mornings, only an hour because none of us can stay.
Eight isn't early, eight isn't early if you work.
Yeah, well, we might
I think you're going to have to consider moving that so that more people can participate.
We might be, we might be. We'll see. And schools, you want to add anything? You know, problems, concerns?
We're glad to be this early in the process.
So I'm working with Sarah. I already had a conversation with her about the process. So we're going to be meeting to figure out some different ways to make sure we're, you know, the profitability of the budget.
Okay, that's, that would be
That's right.
important.
Yep.
Yeah, we, I mean, we don't have any say as to what you guys do with your budget. But it is important for us to still have some
Sense of
Sense of what it's
So we talked about, we talked about the recent
It's important for you, too, because we can't defend it when people come to us and say, you know.
So what we
Ask us questions.
Had the first conversation with, and all the PDP was, let's, has FinCom, has Board of Selectmen threw me and looking with the school committee, let's articulate some of the things we want to see. And then I'll work with the school committee and see to figure out how we can provide that and build it into the budget process. And also discuss, you know, we discussed the communication regarding pre-pays and all that, and that should be
Yeah, yeah.
Tim, are there any who are in school committee? Are there any contracts that are coming?
Besides the
I only have one as a teacher, and that's good for three years.
Okay.
Administrators are three years typically, but everybody's current.
So there aren't going to be any outstanding, non-negotiated contracts as we go through this whole process like last year?
This is a year we don't have one. The following year, dispatchers, then police again, but we have one year where there are none.
Enjoy the year.
Yes.
Get a breather.
Well, it'll, it'll allow us to do some of the other things that we need to do.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good, okay.
First touch point, I think our actions, I'll document in more specificity before we send the letter out, kind of the timeline, dates. We have also an action here on, you know, discussing a centralized maintenance budget and one for the long-term caps as well as
Grace.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll talk to you later.
Nine o'clock.
You want me to, what, seven tomorrow?
David, you still here?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to do non-exercise of first refusal rights.
We'll get the revised
Oh, sorry, DPW, oh, we didn't talk, wait, wait, we didn't talk about DPW.
What was that? I saw that on there.
Well, I guess it's just a question of whether we think that DPW should be, the transfer station should be more self-supporting, revenue neutral.
I think
And it's just, it's just
Talk about that and report back.
We, we don't need to talk about it tonight, but it was just that we wanted to
Self-supporting.
To, to raise that issue.
Okay, so I'll put on a agenda for us to discuss.
Okay. Yeah, it was only to notify you that this is something we've been talking about, whether to pay us or throw. We don't know whether we need to be looking towards, you know, making it revenue neutral, or something else we're doing with it, but we want your help and input on that.
The sticker fees is another thing to look at.
And the sticker fees, which are totally antiquated.
And go into the hazardous waste fund, not to the operating budget of transfer station.
Exactly. So, yes, so all that kind of stuff, we wanted to talk about this year.
Good.
Okay.
Tomorrow morning, ten AM?
Yes, yes.
Right here?
Yes, right here. Same place, same station. Okay. David?
Hi there. So I will apologize on behalf of the applicant that the notice had some of the incorrect information in it in terms of referencing whether it was chapter sixty-one or sixty-one A. I had conversations with town council this evening and also with their attorney to get a revised corrected notice to you, but they caught the errors in few places, but not in others. So I talked to Tom Harrington just before coming into this, and he said, what matters is the document that you have before you, which Tim and he and I reviewed earlier this evening and is correct. And so council says that it's fine to get a corrected notice tomorrow, and I will be sure that a corrected notice gets to Tim tomorrow. And again, all it has to do is correct chapter sixty-one A to chap, section fourteen to chapter sixty-one, section eight. They will, that one's correct.
What, the motion that we have in front of us?
Well, I don't know.
No.
It says, it says fourteen, it doesn't say eight.
But I think Tim has a, you have a revised
I've updated one that was on the table tonight.
Yeah, so there's a revised one on the table.
Sign the corrected notice.
Oh, this one, okay.
Tom said that was fine.
Got it.
And, and just for the sake of anybody who's paying attention, the reason why the selectmen are accepting this notice and voting to not exercise their right of first refusal as opposed to having this parcel go through the normal process that we go through when we have our one hundred and twenty-day window to decide whether to exercise that right, is that that whole process was done two and three years ago, when we worked out the whole arrangement in terms of the purchase of the adjacent two parcels and the passing of the ROSC bylaw, such that the town was getting the thirty-two acres of open space out of this parcel. And so the last part of the document that you have in front of you states that if they don't build an ROSC here, that your non-exercise of your right of first refusal is null and void. So by not exercising your right of first refusal, you are essentially getting what one wants to get from property coming out of conservation, which is valuable benefit to the town, both in terms of the open space and a new form of development that provides variety to the housing stock in Carlo.
You can already do this.
We had a memorandum of
We had a memorandum of understanding that said that when they submit this, the selectmen would do this and hold it in escrow until the permit was granted. And the, that actual request just fell through the cracks. And so as part of the closing of the planning board hearing, it was noted that it needed to be done, which is why, and which is why it's being done now. And it's also why there were errors in it that need to get straightened out, is because it was being done. I mean, there's no, you know, it's not essential that it be done this minute. The planning board just filed the decision today, and there's a twenty-day appeal period, and the Board of Health still has things to do, and so on and so forth. But we should
It's done.
You have in front of us, let's get it done.
Do that motion?
Yes.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote not to exercise the town's right of first refusal under Master General Law, Chapter sixty-one, Section eight, to acquire the land consisting of one parcel containing approximately forty-one point eight-six acres located in Carlo, Middlesex County, Massachusetts, recorded in Middlesex County North Registry of Deeds in Book two-eight-two-one-two, page seventy-one, and Book four-nine-nine-two, page thirty, and shown as lot X. Is it really shown as lot X?
Yes, because, yep.
Not to, to be filled in later thing?
No, no, it really is.
Lot X on the plan entitled Memorandum of Understanding Plan, prepared by Stamsky and McNary, Inc., dated ten-ten-seventeen. The notice of non-exercise is limited to a sale and conversion of the property for residential open space community, ROSC. Development with a maximum of eighteen units is described in a memorandum of understanding between the owners and the town dated ten-eighteen-seventeen. If the property is used for anything other than a ROSC development with a maximum of eighteen units, the notice of non-exercise shall be null and void.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, it's roll call vote.
Uncle Oliver, aye?
Louis, aye.
Reed, aye?
Arnold, aye?
Brown, aye?
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
David. You want any of these? Okay. Catching backup.
Corrective letter, have them sign it later.
We have a discussion of the, that didn't sound good, approval of bow hunting charter regulations, Deer Control Committee Charter. Do we have somebody from Deer Committee, or are you doing this?
I think I'm doing it unless, or did you want to, Dan?
No, not particularly.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, well, I'll give the general overview, and then if you, or Alex, hi Alex, have something you wanna add from the Deer Control Committee, please do. The first part is the charter for the Deer Control Committee, which, just as a background, so we had both these items on the agenda at the last Board of Selectmen's meeting, but we decided to wait until this month to allow for more review and input. So the charter that's here is the same one we presented last, that was suggested last, at the last meeting. I can read through it if you want me to, but it's, it's been the same one that you've looked at before. And it just outlines what the role of the Deer Committee is, and describes the membership. The one thing that.
That it's a pilot.
Yes, that it's a.
Program, and it'll be renewed every year.
Yeah.
Discussed and reviewed.
Every year.
Every year.
And that the regulations will be discussed and reviewed, and that because some of the hunting is done on conservation land, it needs the approval of both the Board of Selectmen and the Conservation Commission.
Have, has the Conservation Commission reviewed this at all yet? I mean, have they seen it?
Yes, they have seen it, yeah, Alex, do you wanna?
Alex, for a thirty-one dollar silver.
Hi, Alex.
Also a member of the Conservation Commission, the commission voted last Thursday to approve and adopt.
Okay. That's good to know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there any consideration, sorry, I get, you know, Saturday, if you eliminate Saturday and Sunday.
Wait, wait, we're not on that, we're just on the charter.
This is just the charter.
Right now, we're just, yeah, no, no, I'll give, I'll give a little more of an overview of the regulations, but this is just the charter for the Deer Control Committee.
Luke couldn't hear, he had to drop out.
Oh.
Okay.
He won't be calling back in.
Oh, okay, I, I don't blame him, I, I, it's, the hearing is the part, is the problem, we can hear him, but hearing and understanding what's going on is.
I'll work on that.
It's really. Painful.
We could do a long-term cap for a proper speakerphone system.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to approve this?
Yes.
Yes.
I move that the proposed charter dated July eighteenth, twenty nineteen, for the Deer Control Committee be approved by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Brown, aye? Oh, he's gone.
No, he's gone, so it's, we're back to just.
Aye.
Brown, aye.
Okay, opposed? Nobody, that was unanimous, or that was.
Okay. So the, the regulations that are before us tonight are the regulations being proposed for a bow deer hunt this fall on Carlisle town-owned land. And the four, I mean, the five parcels are the same as they were last year, Benfield, the Conant Land, Davis Corridor, Greeno, and Town Forest. So when we, we, as a Board of Selectmen, I don't know if you recall this, we had the conversation about the two options about the weekly time allowed for hunting. And what we had come forward with to get input around was whether we should, in addition to no hunting on Sundays, which is by state law, should we prohibit deer hunting on Saturday, and then allow Monday through Friday bow hunting as per the state's regulations, which is thirty minutes before sunrise until thirty minutes after sunset? That was one option, the other option was to consider restricting the time of the bow hunt in the middle of the day, so that there'd be no discharge of a bow, of an arrow, between ten AM and two PM. And we solicited input about those two options from a really broad array of, of both committees and individuals. And there was no clear consensus, or, or, you know, there was, it was very mixed, the response to that, and not just from hunters, the hunters were kind of split between those two options and the public as well. So we didn't get a clear, you know, mandate for either one of those options. And the more that we as a committee talked about it, the more that we felt that neither one was an option that we wanted to support. And the letter here from Jonathan Decock, who is the Chair of the Deer Control Committee, outlines some of the reasons that we looked at, some of the issues that we looked at. So the difficulty with excluding Saturdays is that for some people with jobs, they don't have flexible hours, and they wouldn't be allowed, they wouldn't be able to hunt during the week, so that would prevent some qualified hunters from participating. The difficulty excluding the ten AM to two PM is that it, we discovered it'd be very hard to enforce, and that it would be disruptive to the hunt. And it really isn't an adequate amount of time to distinct, to distinctly separate the uses on the land. But as we continued talking about it, what we felt we were getting into was a situation of having, of having either be time for the hunters or time for the community to be on the land. When in fact, as a, as a group on the Deer Control Committee, we, we believe that bow hunting is both a safe activity, and also that we are trying to, we're doing this bow hunting on town-owned land as a way to protect the forest, the understory that is being affected by the overpopulation of deer. And that that is in the best interest of the town and all of the people that wanna use the town lands. And so that's really the driving force behind having a bow hunted, it was not that we thought it was an important recreational activity to offer to bow hunters. And so as we've gone through these discussions, we realized that we really wanna bridge that divide in the community, and not have it be sort of a us versus them, or hunters versus trail users. And so we are proposing that we stick with the same timeframe as we had last fall, in terms of the weekly times that bow hunting would be allowed. And we're proposing that the season would commence on October seventh of two thousand nineteen, and run to and including December twentieth of two thousand nineteen. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, this is incorrect here, no, it should be November, isn't it November thirtieth? Do you have the, oh, you have the December twenty-two.
Well, this is, this is the old one that.
Yeah, this is a.
The old one, we don't have a new one.
This is the one that has the O R in there.
Oh, oh, we don't have the newest one, okay, okay. Well, my apologies. Am I right about the date, though, Dan, it's November thirtieth?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so, uh, so as I said, October seventh, run to and including November thirtieth.
Yeah, no, November thirtieth.
Yeah.
Including December twentieth.
No, 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 you don't want that, so it starts October seventh and runs, yeah, so not here, but, and runs to and including November thirtieth.
Oh, oh, gotcha, so I only hope October to November, oh my god.
So it's a little shorter, it's shorter, we are not including December, which was one of the discussions being, one of the timeframes being considered, yeah.
Got it. That's a step. Now I understand whether, okay.
Okay. And so we are proposing these regulations with, that are, I think dramatically improved from last year's regulations regarding the, both the specificity of the field regulations, and also the penalties, which are referred to here as the take-related regulations, but penalties for hunters who do not follow the regulations. Those have been significantly increased and, and, and expanded upon in these regulations. I can go over all the specifics if, if you'd like that, but you've had time to look at these for, you know, quite some time now, so I'm hoping that we don't need to do all that.
So I just wanna make sure, that the only thing that's different from what we saw the last time are these dates, and then this is not an O R.
Yeah, you don't have, no, that's.
It's just, it is the daily hunting hours during the season, coincides with states' allowed hunting hours.
Shoot. Yeah.
From half hour prior to sunrise, half hour after sunset, period, right?
Right.
No, I'm just looking at harvested animals and field dressing remains must be removed without. Yeah, did you, the one I sent you via email.
We need to also include, except that hunting is prohibited on Sundays.
No, that's a, a state is.
Yeah, but this is state hours, not days.
Yeah, see, this is a draft.
Yeah, but state doesn't allow hunting on Sundays either.
I know that, yeah.
So.
So we received the right one.
So it's not an accept.
This is the way this is wording, is that it's, coincides with the state's allowed hunting hours.
Alan. Yeah, the one that I sent you electronically is the correct one.
Okay, so how does nine read? Nine point one, how does that read?
Yeah, let me go to nine, thank you. Nine, it says field regulations, nine point one, daily hunting hours during the season will coincide with the state's allowed hunting hours, from a half an hour prior to sunrise to a half an hour after sunset. Nine point two, hunting is permitted only from temporary portable tree stands, the tree stands shall be set back from any marked trail by at least one hundred feet. Any tree stand located within one hundred and fifty feet of a marked trail shall not point in the direction of the nearest such trail, as determined by the deer agent. For the purposes of these regulations, quote, marked trails, unquote, shall mean only the trails shown in the two thousand eighteen edition of Trails in Carlisle produced by the Town of Carlisle Trails Committee. Nine point three, wildlife and trail cameras or any similar recording devices used by permitted hunters shall be set back at least one hundred feet from any marked trail. Nine point four, strap-on steps or ladder steps only are permitted. Nine point five, the permit number issued by the deer agent must be visible on the tree stand and the dashboard of the hunter's car. Nine point six, hunting within two hundred feet of marked trails is prohibited, hunters must not discharge arrows in the direction of marked trails. Nine point seven, hunting within five hundred feet of an occupied dwelling is prohibited without written owner position on person, even if the tree stand is on town property. And then the take-related regulations, which are, you know, the enforcements. Ten point one, no other forms of wildlife may be taken. Ten point two, all deer taken must be reported to the agent before the latter of twenty-four hours or by five PM of the next business day. Ten point three, harvested animals, internal organs, and entrails must be removed with minimal damage to the area and without undue delay. Number eleven, enforcement, the deer agent shall have authority to enforce these regulations and issue cease and desist orders, which shall be reviewable by the DCC, the Deer Control Committee, at a subsequent meeting with notice to the hunter. If the deer agent is also a hunter participating in the program, then as to his or her participation as a hunter, the Chairman of the DCC shall assume all responsibilities of the deer agent, meaning Jonathan Decock would then serve that function if the deer agent is also a hunter. Offenses resulting in permanent exclusion, the DCC may revoke the permit of any hunter and prohibit any further participation in the program at any time in the future by such hunter, if the DCC finds that the hunter A, hunted on private property without permission of the landowner, or B, left entrails in situ in violation of section ten point three of these regulations. B, offenses resulting in one-year loss of license, the DCC may revoke the two thousand nineteen permit of any hunter, if the DCC finds that the hunter A is not, or has become not qualified, as required by paragraph five of these regulations during the season. B, failed to correct any violation of these regulations and any applicable state regulations immediately upon request of the deer agent, or C, failed to immediately comply with any reasonable request of the deer agent related to any aspect of deer hunting. So.
So as what you read.
Yes.
Here, these regulations, it's kinda like, last year we did this pilot, this is kind of follow-on pilot, this, these regulations are for twenty nineteen.
Correct, exactly.
So they're not just automatically carry on over to new year, to new year.
In perpetuity. No. No. And as the charter states, that they need to be reviewed and presented to the Board of Selectmen every year, as well as the conscom.
I was just pointing that out for everybody that.
Yes, good, thank you.
Thank you, and a point and point.
Yeah.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
Where are the motions? I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to adopt the twenty nineteen regulations for bow hunting of deer on Carlisle town land as presented on August twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
I just wanna add, again, this is mentioned in Jonathan's letter, but that, one of the things that we found in taking input around last year's hunt, was that for those homeowners who had the opportunity to meet the hunter that was hunting a parcel near them, that made a big difference in how they felt about using the trails, and just their comfort level. So that's one of the things that we're gonna be trying to do this year, is make the, most of the, we, the application hasn't been sent out yet, because we're waiting for approval of these regulations, but our, the indication is that most of the hunters that hunted last year would like to do so again, and so in all likelihood, they will be people that we have already vetted and know well, and what we wanna try to do is make sure we're having them meet people in the area.
I don't think it's appropriate that it be in the regulations at this point, but I think one of the issues raised this evening was the efficacy.
Yes.
Of the hunt. And I would like to see the deer, perhaps the Deer Committee, if not Deer Committee, but some other group, determine how we will decide that in the future. I think it's a very important thing, because this could go on forever and have no effect whatsoever, unless we have some data on which to evaluate it.
Right.
And I thought that was a very reasonable suggestion, and would like to see that implemented. And again, you know, we keep hearing only ten deer were taken, well, that's a, that's one year, there could be thirty taken this year, or three, and that's another thing, but in spite, even regardless of what it is, unless there's some evaluation of the effect it's having on the understory, which we keep saying is the primary reason we're doing this.
Right.
I think we're, we're not being responsible.
And I think the, I can speak for the Deer Control Committee and say that we've talked about that, and wanna figure out a way that we could set up some sort of a test to be able to effectively determine.
It's not a simple task, but.
No, no.
No.
But I think, but I think it's important that we try.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion, and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Almost in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. It is 9:30. Boston policy guideline and town organizational review. So.
I was going to make a suggestion.
Yes.
If the Board doesn't mind, did I take a crack at this with town council and draft kind of a straw man proposal for the Board to, I think it's hard to kind of cherry pick here and there, because I think it's easier to read through something and make red lines or additions.
Yeah, I wanted to comment, though, on what was in the, in our packets for the personnel bylaw.
Oh, no, well, you, yeah, you would ask me to take a crack at that, yeah.
Yeah, and it needs a lot more work than what you got because you can see my.
That was your first, yeah.
My too, my too.
The first part where you put administrator instead of the board, then, then we repeated the personnel administrator again, so it got, it got very confusing.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot to clean up, and maybe, maybe I made it a little more complicated.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, it didn't work.
I mean, it, there's sections entitled administrator, and then you talk about the personnel board during that same section and that sort of thing.
Yeah.
That needs to be cleaned up.
Yeah. So there was that.
And I'd be happy to work with you as well, yeah.
Glad to take suggestions.
Yeah, and then, you know, so I have notes I can just give you, I mean, because sometimes you say.
Yeah, clean on it.
Any proposed policies shall be posted at least five days prior to the meeting. It's like, what meeting? You know? And then later it's a public meeting, well, a public meeting of what, or whom, you know, whose public meeting?
Right.
So it, it didn't.
Board, but.
And days of a vote, and again, I didn't know who was voting, and anyway, so, yeah, this needs some more work.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So, and then you're talking about the next part.
Oh, yeah, with the.
The Myers Harrington memo about.
Yeah, that one was a little more.
Well, as I recall, yeah, okay, yes, what do you think? Has, has anybody identified anything of this memo that they think is really important that we adopt?
I thought the first paragraph.
Yeah, yes.
Did it?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, which was sort of the, you know, he's laying out options, and I would agree that first option.
The rest of it was what other towns have done.
Yeah.
Yes, well, but there was one other thing, though, and unfortunately, there in my other note, in the other one that I had read before, I, I think it was partly maybe just signing the warrant, I'll have to reread it again.
Okay.
So, yeah, take a crack at it.
Okay.
I mean, that's the first thing, and then I will bring, I will let you know.
She put notes on the personnel.
Let me put it this way, if any of you have, when you read these examples, and there was definitely one that I had marked up, it's probably sitting on my desk now, in one of these exhibits, that I thought, oh, yeah, this is something I really would like to have for our, for our, you know, administrator, let Tim know so that he can incorporate it or not, discuss it with you.
But you're saying, so, Tim, you're going to take a crack at what exactly around the town administrator role?
To, to draft either a bylaw or a special act that would go to town meeting, you know, perhaps next year.
And outlining some additional authority that would, that you would recommend be included?
Yes, right.
Okay.
Kind of take from each of the examples the council provided, but.
Okay.
Then give the Board something to work on.
All right.
Okay, yes, and actually, the one that, it's coming back to me, the one that was particularly important to me was around personnel, that all personnel had to be, all the department heads had to be evaluated by you, and that the committee that, let's say, with the planning, the committee that had like oversight of that person, had to do it with you.
Mm-hmm.
And with your guidance. Okay, managing, supervising, and being responsible for the efficient and coordinated administration of all town functions under the town manager's control, in this case would be administrators' controlled by this act, by law, town meeting, blah, blah, including all appointed officers and the respective departments coordinating the activities of all town agencies, including those under the control of other officers and multiple member bodies elected by the voters, and reasonably requiring persons so elected or appointed or their representatives to meet with the town administrator for such purposes, or at the town administrator's request to provide such information.
Which bylaws that, just so.
Well, that one, that's Exhibit Four. And it was number, Exhibit Four, Section One, B, Two, you know? Aye, aye, yeah, okay. I, I'll, I'll mark, I have another copy, I'll mark it up for you.
Okay.
But that, that sort of thing where you are the head of the, the top of the umbrella. Everybody else has to feed into you, whether they're elected, not elected, except for the school.
Okay.
There you go.
All right, thanks.
That was, there was similar language in two of those, I think that's just the first one I found.
Okay.
Okay. Town Administrator Report, well, get out of here before 10:30.
I'd like to jump ahead to item number three, the gentleman's been very patient this evening, he wanted to talk about Monroe Hill Road.
Oh, sorry.
Are you the man who wrote the letter? Okay.
Yes, aye.
Would you like to address the board, you can. Microphone's fine, I guess, if you want.
Yeah.
This is to do with the possibly accepting the private portion of.
Have you all read the letter?
We did.
Yes.
So I don't need to summarize?
No.
Okay. Well, basically, the bottom line is, there's a 35 residents, half of whom don't even know there's a trust, and we, my interest is, I own a lot at the bottom on that private road, and I can't get a driveway, and at this point, it's moot because I'm coming out of Virginia Farm, nevertheless, what I'd like.
Because you don't have frontage on a, you can't have a driveway because you don't have frontage on it.
No, because it's a private way. Because I have frontage on a private way, and that's legal, that's fine, but I can't, I don't have an easement to get to the private way, and there's no trustee that can give me the easement, and there's, nobody else has any interest in worrying about it unless the town's going to stop billing them for the plowing stuff they've done.
You hear the new lot at the end with the, the little pond and the test court?
Yep, yep.
Okay, I live on Virginia Farm Lane.
Yep, yeah.
All right.
So my thought was that if the Board would support going to a public way, that the residents would have more of an incentive to vote in favor of, of that, and as opposed to if I just went at them directly and said, they said, why do I care about it, you know? So if that's something, or, and now that you're aware, because I'm sure, like them, nobody was aware that this was a private way or that.
And we're not supposed to be, we're not supposed to be plowing.
But we have been.
Except they have to do that to get to where they do plow.
They saved $80,000 over 40 years, easily, easily.
Well, can they get there from Virginia Farm Road?
Out of that, so it's a, it's a strange situation.
So it's not even all the way up to Aaron Way?
Essentially, the pri, the, the subdivision started at the end of that private way, which.
That's really weird.
And that's before Aaron Way, and.
A lot before, yeah.
I bought 46 Virginia Farm and rehabbed that house, and then subdivided back to the original lot, which was part of Virginia Farm subdivision, the lot that's there now. And the, my, from what I understand from the daughter of the people that own that property, the dad went nuts when he heard about the Monroe Hill development, and so I, we think that that's why it became private, because he pushed that and thought that that would reduce the traffic. It didn't do anything, and nobody's paid anything, so there's no downside to anybody except him, now me.
Does, does the private way meet the requirements for a public road?
Yeah, it's, it was paved and sidewalked exactly the same as the, it was all at the same time, so the private way is the same age and condition as the rest of Monroe Hill.
So there's not, there's not a question of width for fire trucks to get to it?
No, and in fact, if you look at the subdivision plans, the, the bottom of the road at Westford Street is the new, the design that was put forward by the developer, so they put in the drainage, and they put in the island, and so on when they did that. Kept it as a private way. So it's really like two questions, one, would you support that, and two, if the people don't go along with it, and they say, no, I don't want it to be changed to a public way, would the town now say, hey, well, we're going to start charging you for the plowing that we haven't charged you for over the last 40 years?
Certainly would have the right to do that.
I think that the process is, is we could support it, but this is.
Oh, still has to go through the law.
But it has to go, you know, you would lay out the way, and town meeting would have to.
Exactly. All it is, is a, is a line on a letter to them saying, well, we've gone to the Board of Selectmen, they recognize the situation, and they, at this meeting, they express their support to convert. If you want to do it, approve it, and then I would assume it goes to town council or somebody.
No, you have to go to Planning Board.
Yeah, I already been there.
Oh, you've been there.
Yeah, they sent me here.
We, we do it.
Yeah, but, but they.
We ask them to do it.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. There, there, I did the same presentation to them.
All right.
And then found out that it's really, you guys have the power.
The ones to determine whether it's laid out properly and to the right dimensions and quality of engineering and paving and all that stuff.
The Board brings it to town meeting for acceptance, so.
The only question I have in my mind is, if that opens up a can of worms for us with places like Cutter's Ridge, who's, who applied to be.
Well, I don't think they were actually to follow through with it, but.
And it was also, that was not developed to the standards, I mean, in order to, in order to do this, you'd have to have actual engineering design documents that show that it is, in fact.
And they exist.
Yeah.
They exist, the, the planning, the subdivision plans, laying out the road, and all those things are all in place, and that's what they did.
I mean, I, I see no problem in supporting it in terms of putting them up, putting the process in place to allow it to go forward.
Allow the town to decide.
Allow the town to decide, right, yeah. Which is very reasonable.
What is it, like, 100, 150 feet, something like that?
I'm sorry? Six hundred feet.
Private way?
600 feet?
Yeah.
600.
Yeah.
It's hard to read, 350 here.
600 feet's got to go a lot further.
Well, it's 350 plus 180, plus 85 or so, there's three different measurements along that private way.
Yeah, it's hard to read on this, yeah.
So it's, it's quite a distance.
So it's, is it, it's not actually where the circle is here on this map, on this plan?
This, this, this circle here?
Yes, that is it.
You see on the right, it says 350, 20?
From this point.
From the, from the.
That point of Lot One, the bottom point on Lot One.
Mm-hmm.
That's the start of the subdivision and the end of the private way.
So it's only where your property actually.
Exactly, it is only where that lot abuts.
And this is so that you can have a driveway onto the private way?
Well, it's, at this point.
You're just trying to.
It's moot for me, but it, at least I could get access to it after the fact. I've decided a month ago to just, we swapped land with a neighbor, and I've got outs, I'm going out on Virginia Farm, because I have frontage there as well, and, and so at this point, I'm, I can't, I'm not going to change my plans to go back and do a driveway off of this thing, but I wanted to carry the thing forward, and I did this, and then I'll give, I have had discussions with some people up on the, on the development, but they just didn't want to, I was trying to get somebody to volunteer to be a trustee, and I couldn't get anybody to do it. So at this point, I'm just doing it kind of as a service to them, and say, okay, here, you can do it or not, but if you don't do it, the town's probably going to come back and start either not plowing or charging you for it.
We won't not plow because, as Alan pointed out, we can't get to the other places without going down there.
Oh, you go all the way around Virginia.
You just can go the other way around.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's another way in. So when you swapped land with the neighbor, that's the, the house?
My previous customer, yeah.
Yeah.
I, we, I gave him land behind his house, and he gave me land down at Virginia Farm, so I could stay out of the buffer.
And so, so he could keep the, the same frontage?
Yeah, oh, yeah, he kept his, well, he, he's got the 200-foot of frontage, and I've got, I've got enough area for the driveway to stay out of the 100-foot wet one setback from the pond, so it worked out well, and the downside for me was that the house, instead of going nice up and high where I had originally planned and cleared for, now has to come down halfway, you know, to, to make it work.
That's, that's why you've cut down more trees.
Yeah, I cut down too many trees in the beginning. I figured, I didn't know that we had a private way problem until I was, had already cleared the lot, and I sold it twice, sold the lot twice both times. One fell through from a divorce, the other one, they found out it brought the private way. It's been kind of a nightmare. Okay, so I guess you're saying.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, I mean, but as I recall, it's kind of more like a citizen petition, isn't it, on the warrant, that they petitioned to have it accepted?
But you can put it on as your own article, too.
Or we can put it on as our article, okay.
Yeah.
The, the difficulty is that half the landowners have to vote in favor of, of doing that, and that's where, I guess you and I probably have to talk just to see.
Yeah, yeah.
What documents you need, because there's no trustee, so it's not like one person can just sign off and do it.
Yeah.
So I can be in touch.
Okay.
Figure that out.
And it's everybody, like, who is in interest in this? Is it just those on Monroe Hill, or?
All three, Nathan, Aaron, and Monroe Hill, that's the subdivision, all 35 of them. There's actually 34 now, because one guy bought two lots. Okay?
Yeah, and I think the next step would be, you need to.
Need to get the vote.
Get them to agree.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll be in touch, and I'll get you the checklist.
Sounds good, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, done one.
All right, done one, number two, the town is eligible for a grant of technical assistance from DEP to investigate future solid waste options, including a pay-as-you-throw system if the town chooses to investigate that option. So basically, we've got, I guess it's 80 hours of technical assistance coming to us from regional DEP staff, they're housed in Bedford Town Hall currently, so that's available to us. So, that's available to us if the board wants to look at the economics of various options. We certainly, we can do that.
Yeah, they'll look at the SMART also, right?
Yes, that's correct.
I forget what that stands for, but it's not as, doesn't put people's backs up.
What you're saying is that they won't just be looking at pay-as-you-throw, right?
Right.
Right.
I just, I'll just go on record, I don't really support pay-as-you-throw. So, but I'm definitely interested in what we can do to reduce.
Okay. All right, then I'll, I'll set up a meeting with them, and we'll talk about the scope of work, and I'll bring that back to the board, so you're convinced that it's the right way to go.
Will that be working with the Household Recycling Committee?
It can be. And we, we don't really have a committee or a working group put together yet, but it can be.
Because I think that's the group that is sort of taking on this-
Right.
Notion about the transfer station, and, you know, they've been pushing for more ways to make it self-supporting.
It's got to be something the board supports as well. It can't be coming from a, just one committee, you know?
As long as it's comprehensive, not just looking at pay-as-you-throw.
Right. Okay. Well, that's good news. Moving on to Item Four, there's a memo in the packet to the board. I'm requesting that both Priscilla Dumka and Kathy Hens, the interim finance director and treasurer respectively, for the duration of the search process for a new finance director, and that they be compensated at the entry-level grade for both those positions. They've been doing a tremendous amount of work under a lot of-
Underestimations.
Yeah. Nevertheless, then I'm recommending it would be made retroactive if you agree to July 5th. Then we'll run until we hire someone to fill those roles, but-
Tim, could you just repeat? Who is getting these, this position to-?
Priscilla Dumka.
Priscilla Dumka.
Priscilla?
Is the, who's the town cop, yeah, I mean, you know.
Yeah. I just didn't hear you say the name.
Yeah, and Kathy Hens is the assistant treasurer, but they're both stepping up in the, in the interim, so suggestion to the board that they, if, if you would.
I move that Priscilla Dumka and Dumka be named interim finance director and treasurer, interim finance director and Kathy Hens be named interim treasurer and compensated at the entry-level grade for those positions, retroactively to July 5th, 2018.
Second.
Any further discussion? I want to thank both of those employees for stepping up and going the extra mile.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, there's a letter in the packet from the town of Bedford asking for Carlel's support for their candidate for the Boston Metropolitan Planning Organization. I think it's their town planner, it was a, it was a town manager for many years, but they're, they'd like to maintain the representation on the Boston MPO, which is the group that makes recommendations for transportation improvements and projects throughout the region. And it's certainly good to have someone from the region-
Yeah.
On that MPO. So, if, if you concur, we can fill out the paperwork and have a chair.
None of us wants to do it.
At least another committee, right?
I see no reason not to support them.
Nope.
Hey, we did, all right.
That's the plan. And then the facilities committees asked if the board would support a request to the personnel board to approve an additional five hours per week for facilities manager Steve Bastek. And the annual cost increase would be about $9,600. Steve's been working out quite well with the facilities committee, it's just that, as 19 hours goes pretty fast each week. Especially, meeting with the committee for the first three hours.
Every Tuesday morning.
Yeah, every Tuesday morning, yeah.
19.
I think, number one, that needs to be reduced. And number two, it kind of gets to what we were just talking about with the finance committee. You know, we're making things on the fly after the year has started.
This would be paid for out of the municipal facilities budget?
The municipal facilities budget was created for particular projects, right?
Yes, and these are the projects he's working on.
Yeah.
So...
And why doesn't this have to go through the same process as the other?
Oh, it, it would. It would go to the personnel board, but-
Uh-huh.
The facilities committee's asking if the selectmen would advance it to the personnel board.
Okay.
So, it's not an automatic, not a given, a request at this point.
This says to approve, I mean, to evaluate?
Or consider, right? They're not appro-
Okay, yeah, maybe, yeah, that's a little strong.
Yeah.
Or request that the personnel will review the request for additional hours.
I just, I also want to point out that since we've had Steve, we have actually saved, he's going to document it for us, but the fact that the air conditioning is working tonight is because he's gone up there and he's maintained, you know, he's actually more than maintained. He's kind of refurbished a lot of the systems, and in so doing, he's saved us several thousands of dollars of service calls, because we had a board that blew out, and he was able to just order a-
Right, he's an electrician.
A new one, because he's a, you know, master electrician.
Bill Rissel hasn't complained?
They've been working hand in hand. He and Bill are buddies.
Do a lot of work at the library, too.
And, yes, and they also saved a lot of money at the library. And we, we got through the library this year without any major ma, well.
It's going to cost a lot of money to do.
Well, but-
It's one of those things you were talking about, is it long-term cap, or is it a mid-budget?
Yeah. But anyway, so.
I, I guess I don't, I don't support pushing this forward, because this is the type of thing that comes back and bites us all the time, where we're paying for hours out of something else, and then we want to move it over, and, you know, I, I, we're, we're only three months into the person, you know, working for us. I probably did that math wrong, but since July 1st, right? You know, I, I think it's a, it's a, it's a change quickly, and I, I really worry about where we're going to end up in this year's budget. It's hard to undo hours. It's hard to take hours back away from somebody, so I would be very conservative about giving more hours for, well.
And this would be for the current year, is that, that's right?
It was this current year.
Yeah.
Not next year.
That's the request, yeah. Then going forward, I suppose.
It was not going, it was not to go forward.
Oh, oh, it didn't, okay.
Oh, it isn't.
No, it was just for this current year.
So, it's going from what to what, 19?
From now to July 31st of June, June 30th of 2020.
2020.
Is that how benefits eligible?
Get us a-
That would, well, that, that would push the person over the 20-hour.
It does, however, it does not require any benefits.
Right. It would, yeah. Make them eligible for that, yeah.
Well, you know, just to be consistent, I mean, we asked for a lot of information, you know, for those other personnel requests. And I'm just wondering if we ought to be asking, this is one we should bring back to the next meeting with more detail.
Okay.
Well, if, if it's truly just for this year, then maybe, I mean, there must be an increased workload that is anticipated for right now.
That's correct, because we have-
Continue, yeah.
We've got, it's kind of a startup, you know, problem of getting things running so that he can just then maintain them afterwards, but, and, you know, learning the systems and stuff.
Can you indicate that to Jerry?
Yeah, would you?
Be more, yeah, more detailed, more information. All right, Item Number Eight, we got a request from the Carlel Kids' House, once again, for the movie night on the common. And they're, they're asking for Friday, September 20th, Friday at 10:00 p.m. with a rain date of Saturday, the 21st.
The motion here says the 27th.
Oh.
27th.
27th.
No, it is the 20th. Didn't she have to give back, didn't she correct her dates, Jen?
She did. It's the 20th.
Hmm, okay.
It's not, you sure it's not the 27th, the later date?
No, she wanted the September 20th.
The 20th, okay. Yeah, I saw that. Where was that? So, it would say, yeah. September 20th, rain date to 20th, the 1st.
Maybe it's the 27th, okay.
Do you, do you want to move it, or you want me to, or?
Happy for you to.
Okay.
It's still hard to find it.
Okay, I moved that the board grant permission to the Carlel Kids' House to hold a movie night on the town common on Friday, September 20th, from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. with a rain date of September 21st, with the understanding that they will coordinate with the town's public safety officials to ensure a safe and enjoyable event for all.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And finally, we have a request from Great Brook Farm, for a board to declare September 15th is Down on the Farm Day. Suggested proclamation for your-
A suggested proclamation, whereas.
I move that the board approve the proclamation of Down on the Farm Day, as requested by Great Brook State Park.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
September 15th.
Down on the Farm Day. Encourage everyone to celebrate with us on this 16th Annual Down on the Farm Day.
Okay. And we're, whereas, since 1987, the Duffy family continues to operate the only working dairy farm that is part of a state park in the nation. A place where people can come and learn about where their dairy food comes from, while learning about the latest in dairy technologies.
And buy ice cream.
And buy ice cream. Wow. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Other end, any, any a's? Okay. Senatories, minutes, we've done, I think we're done.
I think we're done. Half an hour early. Good job, Kate.
Well, that, that's what happens when you cancel a public hearing.
I know it's a public hearing, yeah.
I second it.
No liaison reports.
Oh, it, no liaison reports?
Oh.
Yes, there is one.
There is one, okay.
The Board of Health, which I'm liaison to, and the Carlel Affordable Housing Trust are taking action on the Benfield issues. Primarily, the septic system. On Thursday night at 8:00, there will be a hearing. Hopefully, Benfield will show, and we'll begin to, hopefully, start to resolve that issue.
And when you say Benfield, do you mean Noah?
Yes.
Griffey.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. Noah. Linda Fantasia told me yesterday he's not committed to come.
They, they have a history of not showing up.
Yes.
Yeah.
But they've been, they've been issued an order of conditions.
Okay.
And then we, both the Housing Trust and the Board of Health are agreed to work together to figure out what additional pressure we can put on them, including consideration of fines or penalties.
Hopefully, without displacing any tenants.
Yeah, that's the worry.
That's, that's the worry.
Yeah. Because I'm afraid they will take it out on their tenants.
Yeah.
And, of course, Barney and I had a joint conversation with town council, and I think you guys are doing the only thing that can be done. Fortunately, the town doesn't have a whole lot of standing.
Well, we can do strike.
Yeah.
But we, we owe it to the tenants to be doing something.
Yeah.
Right.
Owen, you have your motion?
No, you can move.
I've already done my motion.
You have, okay. I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.